Good evening, everyone. I'd like to get started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it there after.
Thank you. And could we have roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here.
Okay, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we have a lot of Elks and American Legion folks, and if they'd like to lead us, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving on to minutes for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular and closed-session meetings of March 1st?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to reports. Our first report is from our mayor. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see so many people in the audience. Thank you for coming out tonight. Firstly, I have two short things. We are undertaking a getting involved in a Ukraine donation drive. Please join me and the Summit Police Department in partnership with the Union County Board of Commissioners, the Union County Prosecutor's Office, and 24 other law enforcement agencies in Union County in a countywide donation drive for the people of Ukraine. Beginning March 15, a donation box has been established in the Summit Police Department lobby at City Hall, 512 Springfield Avenue. Members of the public are invited to bring donations of first aid supplies, toiletries, flashlights, blankets, batteries, clothing, shoes, diapers, formula, and more. The program will run for the foreseeable future while continued aid is needed. This donation drive is made possible through partnerships with law enforcement agencies and local Polish and Ukrainian organizations. I encourage you to participate, and thank you in advance for doing so. More information is available at unucnj.org. And secondly, the Westfield Regional Health Department is hosting a vaccination clinic at Jefferson Elementary School on Friday, March 18, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. The clinic is open to everyone ages five and older. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to the City Administrator's Report. Michael Rogers?
Thank you. Council President, good evening, everyone. Just two items. Beginning on March 21, New Jersey American Water will be installing new water mains on Shunpike Road and Harvard Street. Work will take place between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Work is expected to be complete by April 29. Summit Police will be onsite to direct traffic. Emergency vehicles will always have access to the affected roads. For more information, please contact New Jersey American Water at 1-800-272-1325. And then just the last item, just a reminder that I will be ready to present the 2022 municipal budget at the next council meeting, April 5.
We look forward to that.
Sure, I very well. Thank you, everyone.
Best meeting of the year. And now moving on, a few items for the Council President's Report. First is, on March 15 today, the Winter Utilities Service shut-off moratorium ends. If you're behind on your utility bills and would like to protect your service from being interrupted, you can go to pseg.com/helpnow or call 800-357-2262. Earth Day Cleanup. The City of Summit is hosting its annual Earth Day Cleanup on Saturday, April 2, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. People of all ages and abilities are invited to volunteer to help beautify city parks and open spaces. Individuals may volunteer on the day of the event at Bryant Park or Martins Brook Park. To participate as a group, email event organizers prior to the event to be assigned to site. Students in grades eight through 12 may attend without a parent or guardian with a signed permission form. For more information to schedule community service hours or to obtain permission forms, Little Forest Ground Opening. So also on Saturday, April 2, is the grand opening of the Tiny Forest, and that's located behind the Summit Community Center at 100 Morris Avenue. And that will be at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 2. After the ribbon-cutting ceremony officiated by Mayor Rades, community volunteers will be planting over 150 trees in the Tiny Forest. Signs with information about the different tree species will be added throughout the spring. This project is funded by a generous grant from the Summit Conservancy and from New Jersey American Water. And this is, there are very few of these in the country. We may be the first one in New Jersey, and they're, so this is going to be something really fun and exciting. And then I just wanted to point out that for those of you who are standing in the back, if you prefer, there are chairs out in the lobby, and you can watch the proceedings on the TV out there. So if that's more comfortable, I invite you to have a seat out there. And with that? Could they bring chairs in? It's from the side. I guess they could. Could they bring chairs?
You can grab some chairs from outside and just bring them into the sides. Chief Evers, are we okay with adding a couple chairs on the side?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. No, don't want to cause... There are some seats, but they're, yeah, people are kind of distancing a little, so that's fine. Okay. So now we're moving on to our next item, which is ceremonial award. And we're very pleased to have our Volunteer of the Year, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Rades to make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm going to move to the podium.
Absolutely.
The Volunteer of the Year Award this year, what do you think? Sorry. Is awarded to Annette Dwyer. Annette, would you please join me up here? Good evening, everyone. I'm very honored to present the Volunteer of the Year Award to Annette Dwyer. Council and I established this award four years ago to honor individual Summit residents who have made significant contributions to the Summit community through their time, actions, and dedication outside any volunteer work done for an employer. Annette Dwyer is the embodiment of this ideal. Annette does not look for accolades or recognition. I respect that, so I will talk briefly about her roles in community organizations. Annette has been a leader of shaping Summit together since 2003. Its mission is to ensure that Summit reaches full potential as a mature, diverse suburban community and works together with people to shape its future. Annette has spearheaded the Martin Luther King Day of Justice, Equality, and Service to Others, the One Book One Community Initiative, and the Red Ribbon Awareness Program. Ms. Dwyer served on the Mayor's Partnership for Summit Public Arts from 2011 to 2015. I could go on, specifically regarding her service to the Boy Scouts of America, but I made a promise to her, and that was not to talk about what she did, but who she is. In 2012, Annette opened Mondo on Springfield Avenue, a very new idea in Summit at that time, and one for which Annette fought mightily. She was right. Clearly, her Harvard undergrad and Wharton Business School education served her well. As we all know, Mondo is a thriving member of our downtown community. When the building was opened, Annette said that her goal was to honor, quote, "community, diversity, enrichment of small business, and social and economic empowerment," close quote. More importantly, however, we give this award to Annette Dwyer because of her indefatigable efforts to create and maintain open communication among all of the various interest groups in our city. We all know the old adage that communication is 50% talking and 50% listening, but Annette brings that concept to a much higher level. She understands that when you listen, it must be with empathy and integrity, and when you speak, it must be with compassion and honesty. Those who know Annette have watched her over the years work tirelessly to communicate in this way, to bring disparate groups together, to bridge divergent opinions with the utmost caring, sincerity, and integrity. In my opinion, this approach to community, communication, forgive me, is in short supply in our nation. Annette, you are a role model to all of us. We are grateful to you for your service and to our community. So thank you very, very much. And if I may, I'd like to read this. It says, "In recognition of your outstanding contribution as a dedicated community leader and visionary, your outstanding ability to communicate with a wide variety of people in a respectful and compassionate manner has greatly benefited our community. You understand the importance of honest listening as well as speaking, in appreciation of your countless hours of community involvement and for being a shining example of volunteerism in our community. Presented to you on this day, March 15, 2022." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Rades. I appreciate it, and I'm very humbled by it.
Would you like to say a word?
All I would say is, thank you, Mayor Rades, and Common Council, and all the selection committee for this. I'm very humbled by this honor and for my predecessors who have received this in the past. I'm happy to be in your company, and you all in Summit have created the trail, and those of us following are just meant to get on it and persevere the way you have. But I do only accept this on behalf of all the volunteers in Summit who give their time, talent, and treasure on behalf of this great community where the spirit of volunteerism is superordinate to all of our goals. So thank you once again, and I appreciate the very, very kind and sincere introduction. Thank you very much, Mayor Rades. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Dwyer. It's well deserved, and now we're moving on to presentations. First, we have a brief presentation about the new fire headquarters project from Chief Evers. You don't just get a certificate. You get a gift, and it's even wrapped.
Okay. We're ready for you now, Chief. You have to take care of the gift, right?
Madam Mayor, Council President? Thank you. Kind of sad, I feel too excited to be at a council meeting at nighttime, but I'm very excited today, because this is our first update on our new fire project, so we're very excited about that. But just to give you a quick little background, obviously, we broke ground for the fire house in late October of this year. During the process, these are still things we've accomplished since then, so we had to go through the building permitting phase, worked with the building department, got the permits approved. We also had to apply for a soil erosion permit through the state to get through to the side of the lot and the amount of soil that we have to get, we had to get an extra permit for that. We also had to work with Nutraceutical Transit. We are in close proximity to their right-of-way, so we had to work with them, coach them to get satisfied their needs for our contracts to work close to those lines. And we also had, there were some wells on that site, which you knew about. We haven't tested during the development phase. One of the wells had to be reinstalled and had a little bit of delays. We had a little bit of delay in getting all these permits approved, but happy to say, December 27, we gave them the notice of receipt with the building. So right now, we are about probably, we are about a month into the foundation and footing phase of it. Another three weeks, that'll be completed, so we can move on to the sewer, or what went off in slab work for the foundation. So probably another 46 weeks, that first phase will be done, or in the second phase, that's after you start to get some steel up in the ground, so we're happy with that. So everything going good, no surprises. We're a little concerned with the digging on that old lot, the lot of old, historical fill there. So far, other than the beast of concrete, it's been a very, very easy excavation so far, so we're happy with that. But that, we're moving along, so we're, probably about once a month, I'll come up here, about a week, where we stay with the lot.
Terrific.
I'm very excited that I'll have to feel any questions from the council.
Does anyone on council have any questions?
I do. I do.
Oh, you do. Okay. Go ahead, Council.
Hi, Chief. Thank you. I appreciate it, and I look forward to more updates. I was just curious, New Jersey Transit, they're okay right now? Do you foresee them any way down the line that they would have any problems with what's going on? Or are you done dealing with them, do you think?
Yeah, no, we had some pretty extensive meetings with them. Our architectural firm, our internal fire half team, Mike Rogers, entered the transit. We were in pretty good shape. I think declarations have been pretty well spelled out. Contractor understands it has to be done, and work is within a little boundary, so I think we're in good shape to do the transit, so.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief. Are we still roughly on track for spring of next year for completion?
Yes, there are a lot of unknowns, and I should mention this. So right now, we're on track for probably late spring of '23, but that being said, we all know the times from COVID, post-COVID. Materials are still a lot of unknown material, so that's our date. We're looking for '23, but that's really up to how the markets are reacting with supplies coming in from overseas and steel and everything, so. But right now, on paper, we're looking for late spring, early summer '23 for an opening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the Broad Street West redevelopment project. We have two traffic engineers with us. We have Brian Stankis, who's the Senior Traffic Manager for WSP USA, who is the city's traffic consultant, and then Matthew Sekler, who's the Principal for Stonefield Engineering and Design, and he represents the redevelopers. So if you'd like to come up and...
Yeah, I think that was the plan. Good evening. I'm going to be fairly brief. My name is Brian Stankis. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I represent the firm of WSP in Lawrenceville, New Jersey. As Council President mentioned, I am, WSP is the city's consultant. I've been a traffic engineer for just under 28 years, having performed, can't count how many traffic studies, traffic impact studies, like the study that Mr. Sekler has prepared. In addition, I've reviewed a number of traffic studies on behalf of municipal and county land use boards in the state. As I said, I'm a registered professional engineer in New Jersey and also a professional traffic operations engineer. So WSP was retained by the City of Summit to sort of serve as the role of the independent third-party reviewer, traffic engineering reviewer of the traffic engineering materials prepared by Mr. Sekler and Stonefield for the Broad Street West Redevelopment Subdistrict 3. So since last August, we've been reviewing the data and the calculations and the reports that Stonefield has generated, providing comments and guidance along the way, and then coordination with Mr. Schreger and topology, the planning consultant for the redeveloper, and coordination again with Mr. Sekler and his firm. And so we've gotten to the point where we've reviewed all of the reports that they've prepared. We've reviewed, you know, we understand the materials that are going to be presented this evening, and we've also had some coordination, a recent meeting with Union County. So again, I just wanted to confirm that, you know, the materials that Mr. Sekler is about to present, you know, we've reviewed in large part, you know, where we concur with their conclusions and their recommendations and the improvement program that's about to be presented.
Thank you. Do you want to, I don't know if people will have questions. Maybe we'll hold all the questions for both of you till after the presentation. Does that make sense?
I think that would be best.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Yes, you can sit at the table right there. That way you can jump in. You have the microphone that works if you need to jump in. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Sekler.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. As you mentioned, and Brian mentioned, I am a principal at Stonefield Engineering Design. We are a engineering firm. I have worked in the traffic engineering industry for over 15 years. Been, we have offices in Rutherford, New Jersey, Princeton, New Jersey, and four other locations outside of the state. Our bread and butter is traffic studies like what we have presented for this project. We prepare anywhere between 150 and 200 traffic studies like this, although there were some specifics that I'll get into during my presentation that were required of us as part of the redevelopment plan. And I think that honestly goes to, you know, I assume the council's input as well as the planning group's input in making sure this was a very comprehensive traffic study. And I'll get through in terms of what we typically do in our industry, plus I think some of the added analysis we provided to come up with this, our analysis and our conclusions. Again, this is just the opening slide, the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project. Our overall traffic study was 600 pages long. I'm trying to boil it down into a very simple presentation. Obviously, if there are questions that are getting to the specifics, I have those answers, but I don't want to go over 600 pages of traffic information.
Thank you.
Exactly. The fact you have two traffic engineers here speaking at once is already a lot of traffic. Overall, again, what we had studied here, and I'll go through some graphics as well, we did a traffic impact study that consisted of 18 intersections. We studied five time periods. That included the weekday morning rush hour, the school arrival rush hour, the school dismissal rush hour, because again, you have middle school plus a lot of other daycare-type facilities in the area, an evening rush hour, as well as a Saturday kind of shopping peak, typically between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. So what we ended up studying was a very extensive time period, trying to capture all the possible busiest typical days in basically downtown Summit. Our counts, and again, this project for us started in 2021, so unfortunately, we've always done counts or been a part of this project during the pandemic. So what we did is, the counts that we counted, which was in September of 2021, we adjusted them to pre-pandemic levels. In order to do so, what we did is, we counted areas that the DOT specifically had data for from back in 2018. So we were able to see at these couple of data points in Summit, how much lower was traffic when we did our counts in 2021, and then adjusted that traffic upwards to get to a pre-pandemic level. I do think in a lot of downtowns, especially areas of train stations, I don't think we've gotten back to that, you know, pre-pandemic level. People aren't commuting by train, so they're not coming through the area. So again, we relied on that 2018 kind of dataset and then took our counts and grew them up to those values. In addition, as part of this analysis, we looked not only at the traffic volumes on the road, but also accident history. It was required as part of our study, as part of the redevelopment plan, that we were to look at the accident data at all of these study intersections to come up with suggested mitigations or improvements. Not every suggestion may be relevant to this specific subdistrict. Some of it may be useful for future grant writing by the city, but overall, what we, our goal was to basically look at every intersection, see it from a multimodal standpoint, and suggest potential improvements. We also did a parking review. This included parking analysis in terms of what our overall demand is. I know Tim Haas, another consultant, had done basically a citywide parking study as well. We consulted that, but our parking review was specifically really in tune towards the demands of this development, not necessarily the city at large. As part of this study and the counts that we performed, again, at those 18 intersections, we did not just focus on motor vehicles. The fact that this is a downtown that has a mix of uses, that has a strong pedestrian and bicycle kind of infrastructure and demand, then when we did our counts, we counted all forms of transportation. In addition, when we did our analysis, we included the future volumes, and we'll get to it later, from both vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. So where we think people will be walking to the train, we didn't just pretend that they wouldn't actually be having to press the button and walk across the street or walk across some unsignaled stop sign intersections. We accounted for that in our overall analysis. And again, I think when you're dealing with an overall kind of downtown, the point is the car shouldn't necessarily overrule the rest of things. If you have a downtown that is, you know, car-centric, or cars are flying through, you basically do not have a downtown that really has, I would say, substance or reason for people to stop and enjoy. And I know that's, obviously, Summit's intention is to, you know, continue their successful downtown. So overall study area, and again, I'll get a little more zoomed in, but the Subdistrict 3, for those that aren't aware, is generally the area outlined in red. To the northwest would be Broad Street. Along the bottom of the page, kind of running from left to right, would be Morris, and on the right-hand side of that red triangle would be Cedar. And I'll be zooming in, so you see, again, this is the, I would say, very specific, you know, area around the project, but what we studied was all of these intersections that are outlined in pink on this plan. So again, while our triangle of the development of Subdistrict 3 is generally was in that red triangle, we studied as far out of those 18 intersections that are outlined in pink. So again, this was not an area that we really just zoomed in on. We looked at it from a holistic standpoint. Reason why I mention this is, if we were doing a traffic study, I would say, in most general municipalities, again, I do hundreds of them a year, for this-sized development, I typically would just be counting, let's see if I can go backwards, the intersections that are in that triangle. Your redevelopment plan, and again, obviously, with, you know, input from the planning department, redevelopment planners and council, required this level of traffic study. So again, I think that this is a project that, you know, I would say, is definitely seen its due diligence as part of this overall project. Again, this is the zoom-in kind of of the Subdistrict 3 area. You'll see on the next slide, the proposed development. I think this council and the public has seen other presentations about the architecture, the uses in the building. I'm not going to get deep into it. It's a little outside of my specialty. But again, what we're looking at here is the proposed development program. And again, from top right to bottom left is Broad. From the left corner to the bottom right corner, that is Morris Street, and you could see the proposed building. You see the proposed mixed-use development that generally runs along Broad Street. This development is approximately 140 units with approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space, and they'll be parking underneath. There will be two access points proposed. One is along Morris, and I'm trying to show it on the, with my cursor, but again, I know it's not the best contrast of colors. And then the other access point off of Cedar Street would be the access to the interior parking garage inside the building. So in terms of what this project will generate in terms of traffic, and you heard from my previous or earlier discussion, we collected volumes in 2021, adjusted them to 2018, then comes in, how much more traffic are we going to be expected with this overall development? So obviously, there's two components to this site. There's a residential component, and there is a retail component. To come up with the trip generation of those uses, our industry utilizes the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. What this is, is traffic engineers like myself or Brian have sat and counted sites that are in operation, count the number of cars that go in them, amount of cars that go out of them, amount of people that go in them, amount of people that go out of them, amount of bikes that go in and out of them, and basically, based on these observations, we could project what future developments would generate. So for example, here with 140 units, there are samples within our publications that may have 100-unit developments, 180-unit developments, 200-unit developments, and basically, you come up with a formula. How many units are you proposing? What's, and then putting that into the calculation will tell you, how much traffic would you be expected to generate? Obviously, not all sites are the same. There's a lot of studies that are done in suburban areas where there's no train nearby. There's no downtown nearby. And so engineers like myself and Brian, there are a multitude of calculations we go through to come up with, what is the right mix for this location? So we look at census data. How many people commute via car versus train versus bus in this general area? How many people own cars in this general area specific to Summit? And that was all part of our analysis. Also, the location of the site is very important because of the mix of uses. If you could go to grab coffee without getting in your car, that's one less trip in the car category. If you could go to grab coffee without getting in your car, that's one less trip in the car category, which is the one on the right, one more in the pedestrian category. So, what Brian and myself do as part of this process is to come up with the ultimate trip generation of this site. And what you see here is a graphic of the peak hour volume based on the calculations we came up with for residential, the residential portion of development, for a pedestrian standpoint, a bicycle standpoint, and a vehicle standpoint. And the numbers, that's a pure one-to-one ratio. So, if you count the number of, you know, little cars that are located on the AM spot, that's the number of cars that would be generated in the busiest hour in the morning, based on our calculations. It's roughly, I believe that's roughly 22 in the, sorry, 18 in the PM rush hour, 26 in the morning rush hour for the, for the car bicyclist, and my eyes are a little tired, but it's about 7:00 in the morning, about 5:00 in the evening. And then, again, pedestrians are looking at about 17:00 in the morning and 12:00 in the evening in terms of during that busiest rush hour that this site would generate from a residential point of view. These, these volumes that we've basically calculated, we add that into the counts that we had performed to come up with how, what would the impacts be at the various intersections throughout the city. We also did this for the retail component as well. Obviously, retail, it's, it's a little more difficult to pin down because you don't know who the exact tenants are. If you have a, if you have a restaurant that serves, you know, kind of coffee and breakfast items, you likely won't have a lot of rush hour in the evening. You may have it in the morning. Same type of thing if you have certain uses that may not be open at all in the morning, maybe only open in the afternoon and the evening. So, we did the same exercise for the, for the retail uses. Based on Brian's recommendations, we utilized what we would consider conservative uses, basically the highest generating uses. What would be kind of the worst-case scenario, almost if 7-Eleven moved in, you know, from across the street, moved into this development, and all that traffic comes to the site, what would that generate to this location? But again, I would just emphasize that retail can be kind of a moving target because until you know what the tenant is, it's somewhat up in the air. But all of our analysis that we performed was based on kind of that worst-case scenario for retail. I wanted to show a comparison because on this last slide, you see all these cars and bikes and people that would be generated from the site from a residential point of view. But what does it compare to the actual volumes on the road? So, this slide here shows the traffic volumes along Morris Avenue in the existing condition. Basically, in 2021, if there was no pandemic. That is that pink line. So, in the morning and evening rush hours along Morris Avenue, you're talking about about 1,000 cars driving by this site in the busiest hours. The amount of traffic we'd be adding to Morris Avenue is that little cyan strip that's located on the right-hand side of this graph. So, when you're looking at what you would expect, the typical person that's driving through Summit along Morris Avenue in the morning, they're going to see the addition of that little cyan bar over the amount of volume that's currently on the road, which is that, that pink, pink piece. So, again, I wanted to kind of give a little feel because, again, when you just look at this, this chart and you see, hey, there's 26 cars, what does that really mean? What does that do to my commute? Really, that's about one car every two minutes. So, if you sat at a driveway and you sat there and you waited, or if I didn't talk for two minutes, it would feel like a really long period of time. That's how long, that's how often a car would possibly come out of this driveway. So, just wanted to give those kind of comparisons in terms of, you know, so you could see and feel what the type of residential trip generation demand would be for a site like this. Then comes the traffic improvements. Obviously, one of the reasons to prepare a traffic study like this is to identify where can we make improvements, you know, to the overall roadway network. And it's important to note that there aren't necessarily some severe, what we call level of service detriments based on this development. And level of services in our industry, intersections are graded from an A through F scale. A basically means there's plenty of capacity. F means there's, your, your capacity is limited. It's basically overcapacity. It's important to note that this level of volume doesn't necessarily click and, and create, you know, one car every two minutes, doesn't necessarily make an intersection go from operating well to operating poorly. But obviously, we're looking at a, a confluence of some additional traffic volumes, some additional pedestrian volumes, and some intersections that don't quite operate great today. So, we kind of identified a couple of those intersections that could use some improvement. So, specific to this, this sub-district, we looked at intersections of Morris and Broad, Chestnut and Broad, Broad Street and Cedar, and Broad Street and Maple in terms of looking for the opportunity to make a number of improvements specifically aligned with the safety of these intersections. So, for example, the intersection of Chestnut and Broad, and I'll kind of go back and forth between the slides, we'd be looking at making sure that we have a improved pedestrian visibility. Basically, this is, you know, almost be right at the front door of this proposed development to be able to cross over to Chestnut with these kind of rapid flashing beacons that I know are elsewhere in the city. I know the city has some of the, I would say, original models of this. There are some significant upgrades or updates to this technology. We're seeing it more and more. They have very, very high levels of driver compliance. When a pedestrian pushes the button, they get the immediate flashes go on. It's good for the pedestrians. They know action's happening. It's good for the driver. They know that a pedestrian may be popping out. It's great when you kind of have, you know, twilight time periods, people coming home from the train, although I don't know how much longer we're going to switch the clocks, but, you know, you're walking home from the train in the, the dark. You know, these type of high, high visibility performance signs are key. Some other improvements we're looking at is at the signalized intersection of Broad and Maple. Additional pedestrian improvements, the intersection, I don't believe, meets latest ADA standards. In addition, the, I would say, one of the, the main trends in promoting pedestrian safety is called a lead pedestrian interval. There may be some of these elsewhere within the city, but basically what it means, traditionally at a traffic light, when you get your walk signal, it's the same time that the car gets their green light. What that does is it becomes somewhat of a race of the pedestrian steps off the sidewalk, and the car wants to make the right turn, and they're kind of in conflict. And the pedestrian isn't in a great spot of visibility for the driver because it's somewhat at their kind of right side, and the driver's looking at the light, and they go to make the turn. What a lead pedestrian interval does, it gives the walk, usually between anywhere between three to five seconds of a head start before the light turns green. So, that pedestrian gets potentially, depending on how fast they walk, fully across the intersection, halfway across the intersection, but at least in a better point of visibility before the driver's light turns green and the driver goes. So, those are the type of improvements that we were looking at, and we kind of identified the intersection of Broad and Maple as being a key location where residents of this building would be walking to the train, potentially other people in the area may be walking to the future retail here, and that being a key point of improvement at that location. We also are proposing streetscape improvements along the entirety of Broad Street and Cedar Street as part of this sub-district. There is a list of standards as part of the redevelopment plan that obviously we will comply with, but that'll be all part of, of this, this sub-district improvement. We also identified a couple of other intersection improvements that the redeveloper is committed to providing a fair share contribution to these intersections. These intersections are a little bit further from the, the proposed sub-district, but was identified as potential areas where there could be some safety improvements. A little difficult to see, but I'll try to describe what's on the left-hand side. The left-hand side is the intersection, sorry, of Broad and Summit. At that intersection, you basically have two through lanes in each direction on Mar, sorry, that should be Morris. Sorry, it's Morris and Summit. Two through lanes in each direction. What you have is somewhat of a drag race feel when the light turns green, where both cars try to get into through the light at the same time. You also sometimes have a car in the left lane waiting to make a left. You're the car behind them. You want to go through. You kind of make that last second kind of shift to the right and around. That's typically not great in terms of trying to prevent accidents. So, what we've looked here is the ability to install left-turn lanes and basically have a left lane be left-turn only, and the right lane be straightened through. So, you basically eliminate both the kind of drag race feel, and you eliminate that propensity of sideswipe accidents where the car who's behind the left-turning car kind of tries to kick over. So, this is the type of improvements that, again, this traffic study kind of uncovered. I know, obviously, the county, this is a county intersection. I know there's been conversations that the city has had with the county about these types of improvements, and we think that's obviously advantageous at this location. In addition, on the right-hand, the bottom, that's, again, just an example of the, the lead pedestrian phase that we would look to implement or work with the city to implement along basically the entirety of this corridor. Really, it seems like a no-brainer for all these study intersections to kind of, you know, start implementing that type of pedestrian safety measure across the entirety of, you know, of Summit. Again, where you have large levels of pedestrians, that's one of the easiest ways to improve pedestrian safety. So, overall, again, these were kind of the conclusions of the traffic study. There were 600 pages and about six submissions and back and forth with your consultant to kind of get to this answer. But again, this is, I think, hopefully, a little quick overview of what we had determined as part of this, this project.
Thank you. I'm going to now open it up to members of council if they have any questions. Councilmember Bartan.
Thank you, Council President. I have a bunch. So, if I'm doing too many, just stop me. So, thank you for the questions. Thank you for answering the questions about when the traffic study took place. I also appreciate the way that you spoke about how you accounted for the pandemic. This traffic study and, and your report has been paid for through the escrow account that has been provided by the developer, right? So, in other words, your work is complete, and you have no financial stake in whether this actually gets built, right?
My, my work was paid for by the redeveloper.
Correct.
Your reviewer was, your review was paid for by the escrow.
Correct.
So, there's, you know, we both don't have any financial stake, to be honest.
Excellent. So, can you just explain a little bit more about why more streets are included in this study than in a typical study, and why there aren't more streets even than these that, that you've done so far?
Yeah, again, I, I mean, I wasn't the writer of the redevelopment plan, so I could only opine on that. But I would state, one, obviously, this is a single sub-district, a part of a larger redevelopment plan. Two, I do think that there is a kind of inner working of a, kind of a downtown where, you know, even though our cars may only drive through one or two intersections before they kind of leave the network, there may be a pedestrian that kind of walks through other areas. So, again, it seems very comprehensive. You know, I would also say that it's, you know, the writers of the redevelopment plan weren't the ones paying for the traffic study. So, it seemed like an opportunity to get a lot of information that could be used for future things like grant writing or, or, you know, future potential improvements in the area.
Perfect. So, what is the actual peak AM hour? Is it 7:00 to 8:00, or is it 8:00 to 9:00? What's the actual morning?
So, the actual peak hour is, I believe, 7:30 to 8:30. Let me just get it for you.
And then the evening?
7:30 to 8:30 is the morning peak hour. Then we kind of had the school dismissal, which was like 2:45 to 3:45. 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. was the, was the evening, and 12:00 to 1:00 was the Saturday.
Okay. And so, how can, you know, I think it's hard for people to understand, you know, if there's 140 apartment units, how do you actually figure out when they're going to leave their apartment in the morning? You know, can you explain a little of the methodology?
So, roughly, if this was built in, I would say, a non-transit-oriented area, what you typically would look at for a multifamily is about half, half the unit leaves in a single hour. So, if you had 100 units, 50 of them would leave in a single hour, and then you, you know, somewhat of a kind of bell curve effect. There may be 25% in the hour before, maybe 25% in the hour after. Some people don't work. Some people may be taking their children to school, a little off-hours or daycare. But typically, the rough, you know, the rough thought, if you have no train, no bus, no transit, approximately half the unit would, half the number of units would leave during a single hour.
Okay. So, what's the percentage of cars that we're adding versus?
That exist?
Yeah.
So, that would be generally this type of discussion. So, again, roughly, you know, you're looking at, and again, this is just residential. So, if you, you blend in, there's obviously some retail, and again, there's some retail that won't generate anything in the morning, some retail that will generate some. I mean, you're looking at usually about, you know, less than 2% increase in traffic from a vehicular standpoint.
Okay. And I'm assuming it's wrong to think about it this way, but is it correct to think about it that it'll take you then 2% longer than it would have to get through wherever you're going, right? Like, that's not the right way to think about it, but I'm just hoping you'll explain it.
Yeah, it's not purely, well, I mean, my industry would be much easier if I could just make blanket statements like that. But just the way that I typically look at it is, if you have a car leaving every two minutes, and you get to the traffic, and you're, you know, from this site, and you're just a driver unrelated to this project, and you happen to come to the Broad and Morris intersection, I would say about twice during that week, there may be one more car in front of you at the light. Now, you know, whether you're the third person at the light or the fourth person at the light, you might be going through the same green light. So, really, maybe no change at all. You know, if that car during one of those two times he's in front of you, got through on that yellow, and you waited on the red, you know, you have to, you know, you missed the light. So, maybe that's, you know, once a week, once every two weeks type of, type of occasion. But, you know, typically, you know, that level of traffic doesn't kick it into a spot where there may be, maybe impacts. Typically, in this industry, we look at 100 trips in an hour. If you send 100 new trips to an hour in a, to a specific intersection, that may, and again, the answer is may, create additional delays that may have to be looked at a little more carefully. So, again, you know, if you had 100 trips to an intersection that has no traffic now, won't be an impact. But if you have 100 trips new going through a very busy intersection, you know, that's, you know, that's about a little less than two a minute, might create additional traffic impacts.
And then one, one more question, if that's okay. So, driving around Summit doesn't make one a traffic expert. But I guess the question that most people will be asking or thinking is, what if you're wrong, right? So, so can you speak to a little bit of the methodology behind, I guess, how do you analyze in other developments whether you are accurate or not?
So, we do post studies at a number of locations. So, there are projects that we've worked on. It could be a warehouse, could be an office building, could be residential. We sit and we count post-operation. I'll tell you this just from experience. I'm working on a project right now in Westfield. Similar multifamily-type development. There was another one that was built, probably opened about five or six years ago. So, what we did is we looked at what we were going to project for the traffic to be generated, went to this development that's in operation, counted their driveways, and we actually were overestimating in our new traffic study compared to what was, was in operation, was built a few years, you know, five, six years ago. So, it's those type of studies that, you know, we've performed to let us know that we're, we're on the right track with these type of projections.
That's great.
And I would say the other piece is, you don't generate traffic without parking. If you don't have, you know, so if this is a project, and you were saying, we need to have four parking spaces in every unit. So, all of a sudden, your head, you're thinking about, okay, now we're talking about 400 parking spaces, 500 parking spaces. You'd be thinking about, okay, we'd be talking about a different level of traffic that could be generated versus this development, which has obviously a specific number of parking spaces. There's only so much traffic that could be generated by it. You know, people aren't, you know, leaving three times in the morning out of, you know, with, out of one parking space.
Right. Okay. That was it for me. Thank you very much.
So, I have one question just to clarify something you said. You said half of the units leave in a single hour if no transit. You assume that if there's no transit in the area. But in our case, we've got transit in the area. So, what is your assumption?
Yeah. So, I was talking from a vehicular standpoint only. So, obviously, with this type of development, you know, you're talking about something in the range of 25 trips being generated out of 140 units. So, that calculation is probably 20% would be leaving in a single, in a single hour.
But you also, then you have pedestrians.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why, you know, if this was being built in Rockaway, New Jersey, it would be, everything would be on the right-hand side. Nothing would be on the left-hand.
So, you're comparing the, the half to this?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other council members have any questions? Councilmember Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. You mentioned there were six iterations back and forth among the two teams. And I know you agree on the, the final version now. What was, like, say, the major disagreement that you had? The top one?
I, I don't know if there was a major dis, I mean, there's always technical refinement that can be done. There was discussion about trip generation, as I mentioned, the retail component. You know, we, there are different retail users. You know, your, your traffic expert, again, insisted that we look at, you know, convenience store being one of the uses in this building because it generates a lot of traffic. Our initial submission assumed it was just general dry retail, likely, you know, you know, a type of store that wouldn't generate a lot of traffic. So, I wouldn't say it was, you know, we didn't butt heads, we didn't come to blows. But that was, again, one of the kind of, you know, discussions and iterations that kind of we went through through this process.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that doesn't mean that there's going to be a convenience store. We use that as just like our worst-case scenario of traffic wise.
Exactly, exactly. And again, I, I'm not the leasing agent, but I don't anticipate a convenience store that's wanting to go across the street from a 7-Eleven that has a easy parking lot to pull in and out of versus this development here. So...
I just wanted the audience to hear that so we don't have any, you know, concern about that.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirston.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Sackler, thank you for this presentation. I'd like to hear a little bit about your background. When you talk about other, you've done, I think you said, like, hundreds, maybe even thousands of these traffic studies. And if you could tell us about one similar to this particular redevelopment project prior to the pandemic. So, I wanted to take you prior to the pandemic, so I wanted to take you back. And I would like you to keep in mind, and I want to know if this is a part of your study, that our aim is to improve what is already a dense traffic area. And so, I want to hear you talk about your previous studies and how, when you make recommendations, you incorporate them.
Certainly. And again, I, I could bring up dozens of them and I'm trying to piece together which one would be most useful here. One that comes to mind, there is a, again, a little bit smaller, about 50, 60-unit development immediately next door to our office in Rutherford. So, Rutherford's on a train line, it's two stops to Hoboken, but doesn't go direct to the city, but has bus also in the area, mixed-use development, retail on the first floor facing out, residential above. And for us, you know, we are the building, I'd say, immediately next door to it, so their parking issues would affect us, their traffic issues would affect us. So, that is a traffic study that we performed, again, that we've seen get built. We then worked on phase two, which is now under construction, you know, the municipality, you know, I guess, enjoyed the development that happened. We went for phase two, an additional building, so that was one that we worked on. But in trying to think of the recommendations, we also worked on a project in South Orange. Again, I'm just trying to think of areas that are on trains that have good, you know, transit, good multi-modal type arrangements. That one is still under construction, but it did include a number of development pieces like here. We looked at bump outs, you know, trying to make sure we, we shrunk the, the intersections so the pedestrians weren't crossing large streets, you know, they had a lot of stop sign areas, they didn't want pedestrians crossing over. That also had a lot of, again, parking, parking interest because we were building over an existing parking lot, so it was similar to here, where's the parking going to go? That was, again, those type of questions that were raised as part of that. Trying to think of a couple other, I mean, a lot of projects, you know, are near completion, so I'm trying to think of ones that, you know, have been opened and we've been able to see and study afterwards. Again, the one in Rutherford, because we, you know, I walk by it every day, is the one that really sticks out the most to it. We've worked on a bunch of other projects in Verona. That one is open, it was an old, old factory on Bloomfield Avenue, converted into loft-style apartments. Again, same type of thing. We went in looking for different parking ratios than what the, what the town had originally typically thought of, you know, worked through the, this parking, you know, arrangement, came up with the fact that we thought that, you know, I think 1.2 parking spaces per unit was appropriate for that type of location. Project's up, open, operating, we do continue work with that developer. They've, you know, they let us study their parking garage as part of, you know, other projects and it's never been fully occupied, you know, so those are the type of stuff that we've done as part of our, our work.
So, are you taking away any information that's helping you get better each time or any, anything in particular that stands out to you?
I, I would say, again, I've always, there are traffic engineers that are build, 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 widen, 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 traffic engineers, ones that say, if it's not level service B, it's not good enough, we need to widen, we need, and I've, I have a planning background, I have a master's in planning, so I've always had the thought of, you know, good urban design, you know, think of all three modes of transportation or multi-modes of transportation. I think that's only been in, in, you know, as I've seen it more and more in action, it's been something that I've been more, more passionate about, so I think that is probably what I've taken most out of these projects, is looking at, you know, how could you, how can you make the roadways not necessarily, you know, a car getting through the intersection at 35 miles an hour, to me, is not as beneficial as making sure the pedestrian gets across the street in the easiest fashion. We've worked on a project in Morristown that's under construction now, they have the seeing eye there, you know, the guided dog kind of training area, and we're putting a roundabout there, and we worked with the seeing eye to make sure that it was accessible to them. They actually liked it because they could train if they have a, a dog and a, that's going to be going to an area that has roundabouts, they want to be able to train on it. So, it's that type of stuff that I would say I've learned over time, is, you know, I had, when I started the project, I had no idea, you know, how to kind of work with the visually impaired on a, on an intersection design, so that's, I'd say, what I've been adding to my, my repertoire.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of council?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and thank you. I'm relieved that it was a more in-depth presentation than the 10 slides that I received this morning, and it was really not, there was no context, so, yeah.
I, I, I try to, you know, when you put too much stuff on a slide, people tend not to focus, so I tried to balance it between the two.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you put context to it because more information is better. So, those 600 pages, you know, put them out, I would say.
Is, is there something that's sort of in between 600 pages that could be posted?
Well, something that's searchable by a keyword or a searchable document, something like that, so, so people just, so people have it, if they want it, it's there. The 10 slides, really, like some of these icons, I was like, what is, does that mean? And people, you know, per, per, anyway. So, a couple of things, you're counting pedestrians, but what about people that, if this building is as nice as we think it's going to be, maybe even more people want to walk by it? So, did you count those pedestrians that may be coming through as well, more kids walking to school because now it's safer than just, you know, paved parking lots?
So, I guess the, the piece that we, I would say, did account for is that when we looked at both the retail and the residential components, we had a pedestrian bike and car number. So, again, as the retail may draw people to the area, that was accounted for. Now, I'd say people changing their behaviors.
Yeah.
I don't know if we've accounted for that as part of this. Obviously, we could always boost up the, the pedestrian volumes, but I think the key was here is that the, the improvements that we can make for pedestrians, it doesn't matter if there's 10 people walking by or 100 people walking by, if you add the lead pedestrian interval, the walk ahead of time, that's, that's good for everybody. So, it's not like we need to hit a threshold before we would implement that. So, again, definitely something that, you know, working with your traffic engineer, we could look at boosting kind of a, you know, latent demand, you know, you know, kind of, you know, the influence of this being a more desirable area, we definitely can, but I think the improvements are well-built for, or well-designed for any amount of pedestrian traffic.
Okay. And then the next slide, if you just click over to it so everybody can see, you mentioned the accident analyses. You didn't mention that tonight in your presentation, as far as what accidents happened or, you know, outcomes.
Yep, so what, what we did as part of our study is that at all these intersections, we looked for if there was any trends in accidents. So, specifically, the one on Morris that we're looking to change the two-through lanes to one.
Yes.
We, there was a history of side swipe accidents, so we basically look at that, you know, there are driver error all over the place, but the idea is, is there a trend? Is there something that looks like there's a contributing factor? Now, one of the intersections, the intersection of Locust, Broad and Morris, obviously ran on our corner, little offset intersection, we looked at the accident history there. That was specifically requested as part of the redevelopment plan, and there did not seem to be any specific accident history that, you know, led us to believe that that needed to be realigned or, you know, or I would say significantly improved, you know, that you could always add lead pedestrian intervals, those type of things, but there wasn't anything that, you know, and again, you have your, your board, your, your traffic consultant as well, but that's what we did at each of the intersections. We went through, is there a trend in accidents? If there is, what would be the remedy to fix it? And that's basically how we went through. So, again, that, there is portions of that in the traffic study. The traffic study does not include the list of every accident report. Usually, that's, you know, we'd have to white out every name and address and things like that, but that was part of the, you know, the, the collection process here.
Okay. And then a couple of more slides, can you just forward so everybody can see the next one and the next one, that one?
Yep.
So, you're showing there where people are going to come out and, and go back in off of Morris Avenue. So, if they're coming from the west and they want to get into their, and they want to take a left and cross traffic there, is that, is it going to be an allowable turn to go in that way and cross traffic?
So, you're talking about the site driveway in Morris Avenue? That's the one?
Yeah, the driveway there. If I'm coming from, say, Chatham, going home at night, we're at rush hour, and think about at rush hour, how packed that, those roads can be, can I take a left to go into my house?
So, we, we analyzed it as having that availability because that would be the most conservative and worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
The county, and again, I was not party to the meeting with the county, the, the city and the representatives had. If the county says right in, right out only, right in, right out only, we have no issue, you know, again, it would, we would look at, you know, what would be the worst-case scenario would be left turn to that intersection.
And you did that, worst-case scenario?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And then last one for me is, so we've talked about para, talked about street parking as part of this on Broad Street?
Yes.
And so, you know, I'm not the greatest parker in the world, so when people parallel park and how that affects, you know, traffic behind you, you know, we see it on Springfield Avenue as an example, but did you take that into effect where people are parallel parking and kind of gumming everything up?
Where there's existing parking, we did. So, as part of our counts, again, we didn't just count cars and pedestrians, we also counted bus arrivals, we counted vehicular parking maneuvers as well. Also, we flew, we flew drones in the area to get, you know, again, that global thing, because when we count a single intersection, you're, you know, you're looking, you know, solely at one spot, we wanted to see how the overall network looked, but we did account for existing parking maneuvers on the roads that parking is permitted.
All right, good. And just one more thing, because I do like the, the lead time to give the walker a head start. And just as, just as suggestion, because we have them all over town and other towns have them too, the countdown.
Yes.
When people see that countdown, they hit the gas. They want to make that light. I, I, I don't know if we need to go, you know, those countdowns are, they're a mixed bag.
They're federally required as part of new intersections. That said, when they first came out, my thought was exactly the same as yours, I was like, has anyone done the study of, you know, cars that run through the lights because they could tell it's, you know, or stopping short? I haven't seen any studies come out, but it is federally required now to have the countdown timer.
The countdown is, okay.
You almost want it to, like, be like, you should be leaving now, and then almost the countdown just disappears and then you don't know exactly when the light will turn red, but that's not how it works.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you, Council President, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Yep.
Thank you, Council President.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Sackler, this is great. First question, so after your 600 pages, is your conclusion that this corner with the 140 apartments and the 10,000 square feet can handle the traffic that this building would generate? Is that your conclusion?
Yes, that'd be much quicker of tonight if I just came up and said that, but yes, that was, that was my conclusion. And, and, and your boards or your, your city's reviewer, I think, echoes it. Again, I don't want to speak for him, but he could, I guess, speak for himself, Brian, I can't.
Yeah, we've, based on our review and the iterations of the study, yes, we agree with that.
Okay. You had mentioned, when you were talking, that less parking spaces means less cars for most of the building, right? So, if there's less parking in the building, you're not going to have as much traffic? Did I understand that correctly?
I would say there's obviously a limiting factor there, but yes, the idea was that you could be confident that this site won't generate a unfathomable, you know, a, a number that I couldn't even contemplate being generated because there's limited parking on the site. Again, if this had, if you had unlimited parking and the garages keep growing, growing, growing based on every person wants to bring in a car, then obviously, you'd be looking at, I would say, unconstrained potential traffic. Here, there's only so many cars that come out of this garage because we only have so many parking spaces, so that's kind of a limiting factor.
So, if we build a parking garage, though, that would be a factor?
I would say it depends if that parking garage is satisfying other, if it's replacing other parking fields, you know, then it's, it's just accounting for the existing demand and bringing it in. So, again, I, I don't, I don't know the specifics of a garage you're speaking of, but again, if it's replacing other things, so, you know, parking lots could be better served by other uses, then I don't think it's going to tip the scales. If, if there's demand for it, you know, if you build a parking garage in Iowa, it's not going to add any traffic. You build a parking garage in, you know, Hoboken and make it more enticing for people to drive and park there, it may.
Right. So, if we build a five-deck parking garage across the street, will it, will it affect it?
Well, again, I can't speak specifically to what those uses are. Again, I'm looking from this development standpoint. If this development isn't using that garage, this development is using that garage, then obviously, they're unrelated. If that's serving existing demand, then...
I have a point. So, do you generally, when you look at traffic studies, when you look at the ratio of apartments to parking spots, do the apartments generally not have parking? And I apologize if this was, if someone already asked this question, I was feverishly writing notes. So, when you do a parking study for a apartment building, generally, do those apartment buildings have at least one spot? Does it vary? Do they not have any spots? Does it usually fit?
I would say it depends typically on the location. If I'm doing a project in Newark, Hoboken, Jersey City, may not have any parking related to it all. Some areas, they require you have two parking spaces per unit. So, again, it depends on really the location, the transit that's available, things, things of that nature.
Okay. You said you did almost 200 studies a year and you were working with the county. One of my biggest concerns, and this is where I'm getting at with the parking garage, because we are looking at, you know, two other sub-districts at some point, so I know they're on hold, but I just think about, you know, a few years from now. So, there's been a lot of development downtown. I have not been shy about how I'm concerned about the traffic and the parking downtown and how all the parking around us and the traffic will, I'm sorry, the building around us and the different towns will affect us. So, when you work with Union County, have you guys said to Union County, what building is going on in the near, in the neighboring towns and is there any accounting for the type of traffic that's going to be generated with the hundreds and potentially thousands of apartments that are being built around us, even though it's not in Summit?
So, I'll give two answers, or I'll give one, I'll punt the one to, to somebody else. As part of these studies, what we typically use is a background growth factor, basically accounts for future volume, future, future growth on the roadways between when we do the counts and when the site would basically be built in operation. What that accounts for, and that, New Jersey Department of Transportation basically publishes this data based on the county you're in and the type of roads that you're on, basically looking, I'd say somewhat backwards versus forward, they basically look at, what are the traffic trends been over time? Has it, traffic been going up 1% a year, 2% a year, 3% a year? That's what they've typically looked at. So, they look basically three years in the past, look at this year and say, traffic's been going up 3%. So, what we use and, we would use that value and say, okay, it's going up 3% a year, every year, so that when we do the counts, we basically add on this kind of multiplier to it. So, that's what was used as part of this project. We also, you know, if there are nearby projects, we would account for that as well, specific, we're developing on this corner and let's say, where 7-Eleven is, there was going to be a 10-story building, we would obviously get that traffic report, account for it because it's rate, and, you know, it's going to have a direct impact on the site here. Those are the two pieces that we normally utilize. I don't know, Brian, if, when you met with the county, if there was any, you know, or Aaron, if there was any, you know, discussions about other outside developments, outside of, I guess, downtown Summit?
No, the, the other developments wasn't a topic of discussion.
So, what's the 3%, what are you basing that? Oh, sorry.
Okay, so I, I was using 3% as a, for instance, let me get the exact value that was used in the report just so it's clear, but it is a published percentage by the Department of Transportation, and again, they typically look at trends in traffic over the last X period of time, usually three years in time, and look that, oh, traffic's been going up, we're going to tell everyone that they should account for X percent growth. It looks like it was 1% compounded annually over three years, so it was 1%, 1%, 1% to get to 2024. So it was 1%, 1%, 1% to get to 2024.
I do feel like there's a lot more development, though. I mean, I don't know if it's that 3%, but we have 3,000 apartments going up around us. So I don't, it's, I don't know. I just, I'm wondering if that is something that would be a consideration, so. The kids. So what's happening is, is when people, when parents drive to school in the morning, they're, they're racing from one school to the next. So is that accounted for? Because it is nearly impossible to get to the school some days. And are we accounting for potentially people rerouting through the neighborhoods?
So are you referring to kids in this building or kids currently in Summit being driven to other schools?
So the traffic study around the building is right across the street from the middle school.
Yes.
So there are hundreds of kids. So I'm, actually, you just brought up a good question. Are all of those hundreds of kids that are walking, are they accounted for?
Yep.
I'm assuming so. But people will reroute around that area if it gets too congested. So even if you think about Morris Avenue, when you come down the hill on the bridge and you turn left, that gets backed up, there could be 15, 20 cars almost backed up to the light. So are we thinking about how traffic might be rerouting itself?
So I'll, again, try to answer it in two ways and hopefully get to the, something that was what you were looking for. When we did the counts, we specifically counted during school arrival and dismissal. We saw the huge spike that you get at, you know, basically over 15 minutes when parents are dropping off. You know, the crossing people are there. They kind of create almost quasi bump outs and trying to get the kids across the street. We accounted for all that in our analysis. In fact, we did a specific look at that 15 minutes. And then like, what's the rest of the morning rush hour like? Because once that 15-minute leaves, it calms down considerably in the area a little bit after that. Again, so that is accounted for in our traffic study. We counted actual traffic volumes. So we, if people are diverting themselves today, that was captured in our report. So if someone decides to use Broad Street today because they don't want to come down Summit or they don't want to come down Maple, that's in our report. I don't know what people's plans will be in the future. But again, we counted however traffic operates on a typical September day, you know, when school is in session. So however the parents decide to drive that specific day, that was accounted for in our study.
Okay. And I think the biggest, two of the biggest concerns people have are parking and traffic. So I've kind of put you in the hot seat and I feel like you're probably in the hot seat tonight. So I really appreciate you answering the questions. One question I do have, because parking and traffic are hand in hand. And I apologize if this is in the 600-page report. So, um, did you account for all the parking we have in town? I don't think, I think the answer is no. But did you consider all the parking that's currently in town? And if parking goes away, because it will go away to some degree with this building, what is the impact of that?
When you say parking goes away with this building, you mean the actual surface lot? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I think there are plans to have additional on-street parking as part of this project. So I do think there'll be obviously a portion that'll be replaced with on-street parking. In terms of the effects of the removal of this, the parking field that's there today, that I think was looked at in another consultant's report. It was the Tim Haas study that was basically, it was a general city of Summit parking analysis where they looked at, again, holistically, you know, what do you have available in this garage? What do you have on this street? What do you have on this street? And basically, they had done a parking study that looked at, you know, overall, can the city support not having 100 and whatever, 70 whatever spaces that this lot has? And, and support that elsewhere within the city? And again, this project will be adding on-street parking, you know, if, if approved. And obviously, it's a council action along, along Broad. And the county seemed to be open to being, allowing it on Morris Street as well. Morris Avenue, sorry.
Okay. Actually, Councilman O'Sullivan made me think of something. So when you come out of that building, instead of turning left, when you turn right, you're actually right at the light.
So.
How does that work?
So it's, it's going to be tough to see. It's probably about four vehicles south of the light.
So this is the exit?
Yes. So you have about, you know, four to five vehicles between where the stop sign would be and your exit.
Sorry.
I'll give you my card.
Should have known to stay by the podium with the microphone.
My card's right here.
Yeah, okay. The, um, yeah, so, and again, one of the benefits of this project is it does not have a single point of ingress or egress. If you're a resident of this building, you start, just like, as you mentioned, if you drop your kids off at school every day, you know, hey, listen, I got to go down this street instead of this street because it backs up. So what typically happens is, as a resident of the building, if you're leaving at 10 o'clock in the morning, you'll go out, that driveway won't be a care in the world to make a right turn. You want to leave, as you said, at, you know, probably, you know, rate when school is kind of being dismissed or, you know, people are dropping off down at Washington, you know, it kind of backs up the whole way down Morris. Yeah, you might be going out the other way and just avoiding that stretch of the roadway. So again, it, traffic engineering is engineering and also somewhat of a sociology piece where people end up finding their own way. It's like water. So if that becomes a backup problem, they'll go out the other direction.
Great. I'm done. Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
All right. I have one other question, just a clarification. You talked about after, after development, you sometimes go back and, and do an analysis. How close are your predictions? Can you give us a percentage or some sense of how close you are to what actually it is?
I would honestly say typically, we overestimate slightly. I would say usually it's 10%. Again, sometimes it depends on the retail. If we're doing a retail development, you know, and, and we don't know Starbucks is going in, you know, with the drive-through and we're just doing retail, yeah, our morning numbers may be off a little bit. But we've, we've had projects in which the municipality had, um, I would say escalators against the developer if traffic reached a certain level or requirements that they had to install a traffic signal or, or, you know, do some sort of mitigating factor. And we've never had to do one as part of our projects. So either our value, our counts have been acceptable or the level of traffic, even if it was slightly above, didn't trigger, I would say, a punishment or an escalator against the development itself.
Okay, thank you. So now what, since Council's, I'll had a shot at this, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. So probably the best thing, Mr. Sackler, is if you want to just have a seat here, we'll let the public have the podium. And then the two of you can field whatever questions are appropriate. So come on up.
I think it's Brian's time to talk.
Okay. You guys fight it out. Do you need some water?
I'm okay.
You sure?
Yeah, it's okay.
It's unopened.
No, it's, uh, okay. I'll take it just in case.
Yeah. It's not, not super cold. Yeah, come this way. Okay. And if you can please state your name and your address?
Steve Sartorius, 37 Tulip Street in Summit. I have two nits and then one kind of more fundamental question. It looks to me like this is very much kind of a macro study about kind of large areas in Summit. But two little points. Did you examine or think about the impact of having parts of downtown Summit closed during the summer hours? During the summer months? I know the council has shut down Maple Street, right? So that restaurants can go in.
So our analysis was done what's called, what's during typical times. So when school's in session, that type of time period. Obviously, yes, I mean, I was in Summit this past summer and saw the, you know, the open streets and being able to eat outside, outside Finn and places like that, you know, independent of this project.
And my other nit is, I'm a user of the YMCA. And the, the part of the Y right by Cedar Street, particularly like about 6:30, 7:00, 7:30 at night, there are a lot of kids coming and going from swim practice, swim meets, things like that. There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of activity there. And that would be right smack across the street from this building. And I gather we're one of the places where people would, you know, enter into parking. Was anybody, was that looked at at all or thought about?
Yeah, so again, our, our analysis studied in the afternoon from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM. When we look at, you know, traffic analysis, we look at typically what the overall network's highest volume is. So that's, you know, the whole, that whole pink, all these intersection.
More than micro.
Exactly.
Like the, the small area stuff.
We, we analyze at a micro level. So like, we studied and have a delay amount for every single one of these intersections during all five time periods that we have. So we have the left turn, the average delay is 12 seconds. The right turn, the average delay is 34. So we dig in and provide analysis at a micro level. But when you're looking at what's the peak hour, it looks at it from a macro level. What's the worst, what's the worst hour in the afternoon in the whole pink region?
Okay. And then my more fundamental question, I guess, part of the selling point of this project is that this is being billed as a transit neighborhood, right? Because of the proximity to Summit Train Station. But as we've seen during the pandemic, you know, public transportation ridership has plummeted. I know I take the train into Hoboken. New Jersey Transit's down about 50% and it's probably not coming back. So there's been a fundamental change in how people live and work. Your study is based on 2019, pre-pandemic. How does that translate into this brave new world? I mean, I would think it breaks a lot of your fundamental assumptions.
I, I would say it's a challenge for us in the traffic engineering industry. However, there's somewhat trade-offs. As people may not be taking transit as much, people also aren't commuting to work as much and working at home, flexible hours, leaving during different times. So it's.
It may be a trade-off one way or another.
Exactly.
Or it could be you're at home and you've got to make two trips or.
You may not be leaving during rush hour. The rush hours, especially what we saw during the pandemic and kind of coming out of it, the morning rush hour tends to be not as severe and a little more spread. Evening, some people that are working from home, they're already doing, going to the gym to work out when they would have been, you know, on the train coming home from New York. So they may have an additional trip on the road in the afternoon. So again, I would say in the engineering industry, we are carefully monitoring, you know, what the trends will be. But I think that's no different than, you know, what transit agencies are doing, what offices, you know, people that develop office space is doing. I think everyone's kind of living it. But I do think that the fact that if people aren't taking transit, they're likely not commuting and working at home. You know, there's somewhat of a relationship there because not everyone could drive to New York City and sit in traffic. At some point, when you sit in traffic for three hours, you're either not going to drive and take the train or not going to drive and work from home.
Right. Or you can make the argument that people are working and driving to suburban offices. I mean, it's.
Again, if the office, you know, New Jersey office has not exactly been on the rise, you know, in terms of a recent market, and that's outside of traffic engineering. So I'm sorry for.
And then maybe just one quickie. Lots of slides, lots of nice graphs. What percentage increase in traffic do you think from all this?
No, and again, I think that goes to.
That looks like 2%.
Yeah, about 2% is what I would basically say. Again, this is, when you look at overall.
For 140 units.
Because, but again, look at what Morris serves in terms of the neighborhood. It serves a large percentage of Summit's population, which is obviously a lot more than 140 units. Serves, you know, Chatham's, it serves Madison, it serves Mountainside. All that traffic comes through here and you're talking about 140 units. In terms of the amount of, I'd say, global emphasis that Morris and, you know, some of these roads have, it really is a drop, 140 units is a drop in the bucket when you look at the region that utilizes a county road like Morris.
I would say the, the only, I mean, again, you guys are doing a macro study. The pain points are going to come in small places. Somebody trying to parallel park on Broad, somebody trying to pick up a kid from the Y. But anyway, well, thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
I just had, you brought up a good point that I thought. Do you know the daily traffic volume on these roads during the day?
I'd say yes. I mean.
Yes.
This, this.
That's just an hour.
It's just an hour. I mean, roughly, what you typically look at is, this is usually anywhere between 8% and 10% of the total day. So if you want to multiply it out, Morris is probably between 10,000 and 15,000 vehicles per day.
Right. Probably closer to 15,000. And Broad is probably, I think, a number I saw is probably like 13,000 or so, right? They're very busy. So when we're talking these numbers, like you said, 140 units, it's not adding as much as we think it's adding on a percentage basis. Because the, the volumes, like you're talking about, people are coming from Chatham, driving to Milburn all day long. They're going through our town, right? These are 15,000 cars coming, using these roads. We're adding 140 units. And we're saying, even if all 140 people get in their car and drive on the same, even if they just drive back and forth all day long, they're not adding that much.
All day long may be excessive.
No, no, no.
But yeah, yeah. If, if they leave in the morning, come back at night.
Right.
And let's say there's two people in there and they both are moving their car. Again, that's, that's where, when you look at the percentage, it's.
On a percentage basis?
Yes.
Right. The impact is. That's it.
Council President, can I ask a question in response to Councilman O'Sullivan?
Yes.
And I won't ask anymore. But that, that's a really good question because I'm curious if you measure time. So for example, when I moved here, I could get from my house by Franklin Elementary down to Glen Side in 10 or 15 minutes at 3 o'clock. Today, it'll take me 20 minutes, 30 minutes. So do, does that study account for the actual time it takes when you get somewhere?
So twofold. One, again, I tried to boil this down and not go through every single movement of every single intersection. But we analyze every movement that you, at every intersection that you see in pink here on a time basis of delay time. So we come up and say, the average delay for making a left turn from Cedar onto Morris is 34 seconds. And we look at, okay, from Morris, you have to go through and on Summit, at the Summit intersection, it could be 13 seconds. I'm just throwing numbers out there. So we look at, again, on a time basis. Now, you could either add up your kind of travel flow through all our intersections and say, okay, this is the amount of delay it takes. There's also things called travel time studies where basically you look at a corridor and you drive it from one side to the other, back and forth. And you basically come up with what's kind of your baseline travel time. And then you come up with, okay, with additional delays here, you may be adding eight seconds, 12 seconds, things like that. And you basically, that is a study that can be done. I once did it on Route 78 from Newark to the Pennsylvania border, back and forth all day long for a week. And basically in anticipation of like a NJDOT project. So it can be done. It can be somewhat actually utilized based on our study. You could kind of back into that with this report, at least in the area that's shown here.
The next public comment. On it. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Margaritas. I'm from 101 Ashwood Avenue. I'm unofficially representing 12 Chestnut Avenue, the senior building. I go there daily to visit my 88-year-old aunt every night to help her out. And I end up helping a bunch of other little friends of hers. There are 129 units, I believe, 125 or 129?
125.
129?
125.
Oh, 125, sorry. There are no visitor parking spots at all. There are two spots on Broad Street. And my aunt has missed at-home medical appointments because there's no parking for the nurses, home health aides, physical therapists, family and friends. That's an issue. There's also senior members who are waiting for parking spots for their own cars. So I have to get dropped off and get picked up because I have nowhere to park. I've been left messages on my windshield from municipality, you know, staff because I'm parking in their lots, which are in between the municipal building and the senior building. So it's kind of not fair for them not to have spots for us who go there daily.
I understand your concern.
What can we do about that?
I think the mayor has something she'd like to say on that topic.
Yeah, you, you emailed me today.
I did, yes.
And, and I did reach out to Mr. Kennard, the head of the Housing Authority. And I got his response at 5:30, so I didn't have a chance to get back to you. Yes, there's 125 units. There are five, not two, five visitor parking spots. We would love to have more. And one visitor spot specifically for disabled, which is right in the front of the building. This is in addition to the other two, the two spots that are on Broad Street. So all in, there are eight visitor parking spots. Now, am I saying that that's enough? No. But when this building was built, most of the people that were living there initially were very senior and were, were not driving. Now, we currently have six or eight tenants who are on the waiting list for their own parking spaces. Many more people are, residents are parking there than used to when the building was built. Do we recognize that we need to try to work on something and make something happen here? Yes. And the, the developer has been in, has had several conversations with the Housing Authority and the residents. See what we can do as we move forward in sub-district two, one, one. So, and there is parking, but it's behind, in, but, but it, in behind, a lot behind. But it's, it's, it is, it has to be at an hourly rate at this point. So there's more than two, there's eight. But it's still not, we recognize it's not enough and we're working on it.
Where are the eight besides the two on Broad?
I don't know that, but I will make a note and I'll find out.
Yeah.
I'll find out tomorrow.
Been going there for years.
I'll find out tomorrow and let you know.
Okay.
And I have your email.
Okay. If you're speaking about when you're facing the building, there's a little section to the right, right up against the building. You need a monthly permit from the housing to put on your windshield? If those are the spots that you're talking about for visitors?
I'd love to tell you that I have that detailed information. I don't. But I will speak with Mr. Kennard tomorrow.
Okay.
And get all the information about where those spots are and I'll get back to you.
Okay, just please take into account that.
Yes, indeed.
We have nowhere to park.
And we've already been thinking about that, yes.
It's a discussion that we've been having about how to make it better for 12 Chestnut.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another comment? Reverend Harryald?
Dennis and Harryald, 140 Broad Street, Summit. I liked your presentation about the, your Plan A for the enhancements of the traffic lights and all of that. I have a Morris and Broad are county roads. So is there a Plan B in case the county rejects your recommendation or objects to it? Is there something else? What's the contingency plan?
So the city and their consultant did have a call with the county. I was not on that call, so I guess I'd turn it over to Brian to let you know. But they have had discussions about some of these suggestions, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we had a, we had a brief phone call with, with the Union County Engineer about a week ago to review the scope of the improvements in the area. Obviously, Morris Avenue, Broad Street, Summit Avenue, all, all county roads under their jurisdiction. The county expressed, I guess, a hesitancy to consider what they call curb extensions, the bump outs that shorten a crosswalk, and anything vertical like a, like a raised table. We had considered a pedestrian table at one of the crosswalks. The county indicated they did not want those on their roadways. But all the other improvements, the signal improvements, the realignment on Morris Avenue, county indicated that they didn't have an issue with those.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the public? Come on up, Ms. Kelly. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your presentation. That was helpful. I just have one comment and then a question. Just piggybacking off of what Councilman O'Sullivan said and what Councilman Lisa Allen said, we can't really, or I believe we shouldn't really look at this traffic study in a silo. And what I mean by that is, there are 2,000 roughly units going up and developing the surrounding area. Morris Ave, you said, gets roughly 15,000, you know, visitors a day. Now, when you add 2,000 to the surrounding area, and that's being only one person living per unit, let's say 3,500 is that number, now you're talking about a 20% increase. So I'm wondering if there is a way for some work to be done with, you know, our neighbors to really look at traffic flow and just be a little bit more thoughtful about the general ecosystem that we're surrounded by, and especially on Morris Ave, I think is, is one of the biggest areas. My next question's around, my first question, excuse me, is around, you mentioned large levels of pedestrians for being the impetus of why you'd need some signals. Can you define large? Because you cited, I think, 12 walkers and 10 new cyclists. Is that considered a large increase?
I would say, I mean, I wouldn't say that's, you know, on its own, a large number. I think it was more so that there'd be a lot, there'd be the potential for a lot more pedestrian and vehicular interactions along the walkway, specifically to the train in the morning. If people are not commuting by car, their next, most likely commuting pattern would be by pedestrian, be by foot. So again, this was related to the walk, the additional lead walk phase at the intersections along Broad. And again, it was about 17 in the morning, and that's just the peak hour, 12 in the evening. That was the pedestrian levels.
Okay, and sorry, just, my last question is, we have a school age children's study that says 26 children are going to be presumably living in this building. Those 26 children are going to go to school in the morning, right? So does that account for your AM numbers, both in cars and people?
I don't know that study. It seems high that 140 units would have 26 school-aged children. But again, I wasn't the one that produced that study, so I can't, I can't speak to that. Again, knowing what I've worked on other projects for multifamily, other multifamily developments, the school study prepared by Rutgers University Center of Real Estate, I don't think has that level of percentage of students, school-aged kids in 140. It might be maybe the sub-district at large. I'm not sure.
No, it's this district, but thank you very much.
They're just saying 24.
School-aged children? All right, so again, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I like your study. Unfortunately, it's, it's very geared toward residential. Did you do a study for the commercial part, delivery trucks arriving at all different times? And can you elaborate a little on that, how that will add to the traffic flow? I know downtown, when there's deliveries going on with the corners, now we put the no parking signs on our corners. Where are all these, all? If there's two tractor trailers there delivering to the stores down at the bottom level, where are they going to park? And I know, like, over town has the delivery aisles behind the store, but they can't use them because they're too narrow. So if you could elaborate on that, that'd be great.
Certainly. So the study itself did include trip generation associated with the retail users. The reason why I focused more on the residential as part of this discussion was just it's a little more, it's a little more tangible in the sense that the numbers tend to be a little bit, a little bit, the expectation and the projection tends to be much more accurate. Resident, retail, as I mentioned, when we, when we used a convenience store as one of the potential tenants, basically just to grow those retail numbers to numbers that I think are much higher than what you'd expect from a retail tenant in kind of a downtown environment. Again, just for, for, you know, you know, example, you know, a convenience store would generate about, you know, 250 trips in an hour. That's obviously much higher than you would get from most kind of standard downtown retail establishments, you know, during the busiest hours of the day. But that's what we utilized within our study. I do believe that there is arrangements for loading areas that are accessible for both the residential move-in, move-out movements, as well as the retail tenants in the building. So we would not expect to have the tractor trailer on the street servicing this, this building.
Yes, yes.
So can you show those on a plan? The drawing? Because I don't see them.
I think the, this is, unfortunately, I just have this deck of plans. I think the architectural plans that were showed or provided.
I would think as far as a traffic study, that should be.
I think that's something that you could provide us, that we could put up on.
Absolutely. I could provide, so the architectural plan dealt with the, where the loading and how the loading basically serves the service aisles, and also the elevator banks for the residential uses. So we definitely can provide that and add that to this, this.
Yeah, I think it would be good for everybody to know, because, and then, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but parking on Morris Avenue, how can you accommodate spots on Morris Avenue? Is there a plan to widen the street? You had mentioned parking on Morris Avenue. Is it right next to the building?
So the county indicated that, based on the width of Morris Avenue, they would, again, I was not on the call, it was the representatives of the city, that they would basically have one through lane and then basically parking along it, along the stretch of Morris Avenue along our property.
And then, so to follow up on that, would you agree with that, that that's adequate for through traffic?
I believe so. You know, and, and I understand, you know, there is some friction associated with parking movements, people.
Nothing to do with parking. This is just purely about a traffic study.
Well, I mean, the travel lane is open. Really, what parking actually does is, you know, we're looking at, in this urban area, we're trying to slow people down. And right now, you know, when there's no parking there, a motorist has a wide-open travel lane that increases the speed. When there's an obstacle right alongside them, like a row of parked cars, which is a free traffic calming measure, that helps to, that is a measure that helps to keep the speeds down.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other comments from members of the public? Come on up. So I'm just going to let you guys know, after we finish with these questions, there are a lot of people here for the, for the monument issue, and a lot of Elks and American Legion people waiting. So we're going to, we're going to take you guys next, okay? We'll jump you ahead, and then we'll go back to the rest, regular agenda. So we'll just do, we'll finish parking, though, just to keep things simple.
Cool. I have a simple question. Charlie Crusmano, 22 Bedford Road.
Okay.
Just, this question just popped into my head because of your question. So if there's going to be more traffic, parking there, what about emergency vehicles? Because it gets jammed up there regularly. And if there's emergency vehicles coming through, how are they going to get through if it's all jammed up? Did that come through at all? Did you, did, if, you know, at 5 o'clock, there's a fire or whatever, all that kind of stuff, ambulances? I mean, it seems like it's going to be much more of a choke point than it is now even. So that's all just about emergency vehicles?
Again, understood. I think that's something that'll be worked out, obviously, with the city's consultants and the county. Obviously, both those parties need to be agreeable to adding parking. The developer has no control over parking regulations on municipal or county roadways.
Ms. Hardy, would you like to come up?
Vivian Hardy, 1 Oakno Road in Summit. I have a number of concerns, but because of time, I'm not going to go into all of those. Could you put up the diagram of, of where you did this, you know, that, that one exactly? One of my main concerns is that this is a small area, and it doesn't include the impact that it could have on the rest of the town. I don't know how many of the rest of you drive around town every day and notice how many people are going on residential streets to avoid the places where there is a lot of traffic. One particular area is going across Maple Street, getting over to Mountain Avenue through the Brayton School District. That is happening all the time, and I perceive that this will get to be more if these buildings are densely, residents of cars, have lots of cars. And the, that also is true for Blackburn Road and Prospect Street, that the traffic sometimes, given different things that are going on in town, can just be horrendous. And the cars on Pine Grove Avenue drive very, very fast to get to Ashland Road and to get out to 78. So the more cars we have in a concentrated area of downtown, the more I think that will affect our residential areas and could even eventually affect our, our property values. So I, I think that is something that we haven't taken into account here, and that this traffic study should actually have included the area that would include by the hospital and then also over by the nuns and, and that intersection of Springfield Avenue. And we don't have that information. We don't have, can't judge how those intersections are going to be impacted by this. The other thing, the other assumption I have, have a lot of problem with is the number of parking spaces that you're going to have in the actual development. And it seems very small for 140 units. And if most of those units have at least 200, 2 people in them, we're now getting up into 200s of people. And I, I think that most people drive their own car. And if it's a married couple, they're going in different directions. They're not going in the same car. And so if you're not going to have enough parking spaces for them, are you perhaps actually going to make it so that they have trouble renting those units? If the people can't park their cars someplace, is it going to be a problem? So we're driven by this $18 million number that we want to get to. But I wonder if we need to step back and perhaps look at another alternative and then compare the two alternatives? I don't hear that any of that has ever been done. For instance, what if you put condominiums there? Now, I know one of the answers is that you want to have reasonable housing, a number of units that are reasonable. I've lived in Summit 54 years, and I was on the original committee that raised funds, raised funds for Glenwood Place. Later, we learned that the state would not, not count some of the units that we had built even before, that was public housing. Because over by the hospital, over by the high school and Dennis Place, there's a whole area of more affordable housing that doesn't get counted in Summit's numbers. And I'm wondering if the council has ever thought of going back to the state and saying, hey, we've got more affordable housing than you're giving us credit for. So I just think that's something to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. I'm going to ask people to restrict their comments to, to things about traffic, and rather than going sort of further afield on this. Go ahead. Okay, hi. Real quick, Beverly Brown, 221 Ken Place Boulevard. You mentioned, Mr. Suckler, 2% increase. So what does that translate into? 2% of what?
We were referring to the volume of traffic along Morris. So again, it was about 1,000 vehicles in the morning rush hour, so 2% of that would be.
Okay, okay. And then, I know you were before the planning board when it came to the Promos School, and, you know, we asked some questions regarding traffic then. And I believe I asked this question then, and I'll ask it again now. Does your traffic study account for Waze and Google Maps and the redirecting? I think there were some allusions to how this will spread out into not just Morris, not just Broad, but into the tertiary streets?
So I would state that for this project, again, we have a pretty wide, I'd say, network of roads. Whereas, in addition, we are not seeing significant impacts to delays based on this development. If we were coming up with, this is going to cause 20 more seconds delay on Morris Avenue and 40 more seconds delay on Summit, then I do agree, I think there could be some rerouting. But when you're talking about one new car every two minutes, you know, based on this residential aspect, that's not going to trigger a, someone rerouting their, their travel pattern, or at least, I assume Waze is not going to reroute them because twice a week, someone may be in front of you, you know, at the red light. I, I don't think it registers a delay amount that would entice you to go to an alternative means of travel.
Okay. And just last question. I know you are a popular traffic engineer, and you weighed in on Westfield's, Westfield Crossing, and a lot of other, you mentioned Rutherford. I think you testified for Morristown. Have you ever done a traffic study where your study said that the increased traffic due to a development would overburden the area?
Yeah, and they require mitigation or fixes. The Morristown project, we, the roundabout we're constructing is because the roadway network would not support the ability for these office people to get back to 287. We had to construct, I think, a $2 million roundabout. I've had projects construct traffic signals, widen roadways, things of that nature.
Okay, anything similar to what we've got going on here on Broad Street?
Um, you know, we've looked at, you know, traffic signals in, you know, downtown areas, but those were areas that the development was much larger than what you're looking at here. We've worked at projects in Fort Lee that required upgrades to eight traffic, eight intersections because of the size of the development. This one, again, based on the analysis that your, you know, the town's own consulting engineer has agreed to, doesn't appear to trigger that level of fixing or mitigation from a traffic point of view. Again, we are looking at safety improvements, pedestrian improvements, things along that nature because of this project, though.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Civio, I think you're, oh, Ms. Lowshird, come on up.
You want to sit down?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name is Irene Lowshird, and I live in town. I had some questions about the traffic study in particular and some of the sites you showed. I'd like to go back to the slide where you had a discussion about the 2% increase in the residential. I don't think we ever got an answer, or it wasn't clear on what you thought the retail would have.
Right. So again, our traffic study itself, and again, I'm going to state that I don't believe there's any intention to have a convenience store in this building. But if you did have a convenience store in this building and the retail, we'd expect that would add an additional 130 trips in the morning, about 90 trips in the evening rush hour.
So that sounds a lot more than the residential. There was only, was it 26 residential cars? I mean, 100 seems like a lot more. So it must be, that must be like additional 8%.
So there's a couple, there's a couple of factors at play here. One, all retail trips don't necessarily mean they are new trips. And we use the example of a convenience store. A convenience store has, over half its traffic is pass-by traffic, meaning that those 1,000 people driving by on Morris, those make up a lot of the customers for retail. As opposed to residential, you're, you know, you build a new residential building, every person coming into that building is a brand-new car to the network. You build a retail development, some of the new people going to that retail may be going specific, you know, decide to come to Summit for that retail, and a large percentage are people that are already on the busy roadway network of Summit. Now, again, we analyze this using convenience store. If we analyze this just as retail, just said, it's 10,000 square feet of general downtown retail that you have in Summit, you'd be looking at increases of traffic in kind of the 10 to 20 range per hour, as opposed to 100 or so range. So the report that, you know, your, the, the city's analysts looked at to come up with and agreed to our conclusions included these higher, higher numbers. I didn't want to throw out there the thought that we are going to build a convenience store, which is why I didn't put that percentage on here as well. But again, you'd be looking at about 20 trips if it was just general, I'm going to say, you know, undescript retail, you know, restaurant, things like that.
Are they going to ask you to do the same traffic study with the same corners that you marked in purple when they put in the grocery store across the street? And the parking garage? Or does that affect the numbers? Or will it not affect the numbers?
So, I'll tell you, I am a consultant for this sub-district. I have no idea, I'm not hired to do any other work, so I can't speak one way or the other about it.
Maybe we'll say a different.
You may, it depends on how it goes tonight, I guess.
So you do have a financial stake in this plan?
No, it's.
Well, I'm, you're the future work.
Ms. Lowshird, I just want to clarify, at this point, the post office is not going anyplace, and we're not talking about a large grocery store. If there's a grocery store in Sub-District 1, it'll be a smaller, a smaller one.
Okay.
So just to clarify that.
Okay. So that has changed.
That has, yeah, the post office at this point is not interested in moving to another location, so.
The other question, oh, what I wanted to say was. The other question, oh, what I wanted to say was, you had said that there was easy parking across the street at 7-Eleven. And it was nice to hear that a traffic expert said that underground parking is not easy.
Can, I would state that what I was alluding to is, if you're a quick-serve retail, the ability to get in and out of a building, of a use quickly, is important. So I would imagine if I was working for 7-Eleven Real Estate, I'd prefer to have a nice surface parking lot in front and pull in, have my customers pulling it out. I'm not speaking to whether an underground parking lot is good, bad, or different. But from a 7-Eleven business model, I don't think that they would love, you'd have to go around the block and park in a garage.
I don't drive down that block much because there's nothing there, really, on my way to somewhere. Can you compare that intersection in terms of traffic to another Summit intersection in terms of the volume so that I can get a clearer idea?
Do you go through any of the other intersections within the pink study that you had?
I drive a lot on Summit Avenue, Springfield Avenue, but not in that triangle, right?
All right, let me get you a number then, hold on.
I drive through the intersection of, I guess, Broad and Springfield, or Morris and Springfield.
Let me look, do you go through Morris and Summit?
Not really.
Summit and Broad, Summit and Union Place? Any other pink intersection here that I could compare it to?
I don't drive in that part of town, really.
So, Ms. Lowshird, just in the interest of economy of time, there are a lot of people waiting.
Sure, I just was trying to get a comparison, like, is it the same as the intersection of Summit and Springfield Avenue? Is that how busy that intersection is?
Can you answer that question?
I believe this intersection has less traffic on the side streets, so Broad and Locust are a little light, more, less traveled than Summit. But we didn't study that as part of this project, I'd have to look at the two.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Council Mayor, nice to see you guys. Amy DeCibio, 1S6 Road. I just have a question for the cars, for the apartment. How many cars, actually cars, were you using for that building, for the 140 units? What was the car number?
You meaning in terms of parking or in terms of trips?
How many, when you were estimating, you know, 50% of the people would leave or 20% of the people would leave at the same time, what was the total car number you were looking at for 140 units?
So, and I know this won't be exact the answer that you were asked, that you were looking for. The calculation we use for determining trip generation for a multifamily building is the number of units. So we basically just take the number of units and then we have a formula that says, you know, take the number of units, multiply it by, and again, it's approximately a half. And that tells you the number of trips that would be generated. So it's not necessarily related to the number of cars that people may have in the building, but it's specifically related to the number of units that are in the building.
Okay, so the number of trips is generated by the number of units, not the number of cars?
With a limiting factor. Obviously, if we were doing a project in Jersey City, we can't just take that, and let's say there's no parking provided on site.
Right.
Then obviously, it'd be unreasonable to say that, you know, if we were doing 100 units, that 50 cars would be generated in the peak hour because clearly there's no parking for that. So when we do these studies, we also then look at the parking supply to, basically to say, is this within range? You know, and that's when we look at census data for Summit, people that live near the train station and, you know, Summit, how many cars do they own? How do they commute? And we come up with a calculation.
Okay, so there's no way to know how many cars you think would be?
Well, the number of trips, no, like, so the number of trips that I'm stating, that's the number of cars that'd be going in and out of the driveway.
Right.
The number of cars that'll be in the building would be more related, I guess, to parking. But not everyone leaves during, you know, the rush hour. People that may have a car and they may take the train, they may never move their car during rush hour.
Okay. Did your study take into the fact that there are 140 units and I think it's 89 parking spaces, that many of the residents won't have a parking space in the building as it stands, and so they may be circling to try to find a spot on the street?
I believe there's at least 128 spaces in the building, if not more. I think there's been some late revisions to the plan.
I think there's 89 dedicated spots to the building, and then there's this, an ancillary lot that I thought was supposed to be used for the retail space, or how does that work?
There's, that number is still, you know, influx. The number is going up, so we're getting more parking spaces, but.
Does that affect the numbers?
No, the, the.
Will that affect the numbers?
No, again, we utilize a calculation. We then take that calculation, we say, does this make sense based on the parking we have? The parking that we have for this building will be slightly greater than, I guess, some numbers that were tossed around earlier because we're trying to take that garage and kind of make it more efficient in terms of where the spaces are located. You know, just angle spaces differently.
Okay.
You know, there's some dead spaces in a building that is that shape, trying to make the, more spaces fit inside.
Okay, and then one other question, because I know it's getting late. On the second lot, the one that's considered the municipal lot, can you just show that on your screen again, real quick? It's the one that's supposed to be, I think it's 39 spaces or something like that. It's the second, I think you pointed out the entrance was, yeah, can you just show me? So then, that entrance is the one that's that little bump in off of Morris Avenue between the green space and the big building?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be, quote, "municipal space." So who's supposed to use that space? Because if you're like in town or wherever, that's a pretty big hoof from town. So are those units supposed to be, those parking spaces supposed to be dedicated for the retail space that's there? Do you understand what I'm saying? That's the municipal lot, that's not for the residences?
This is a parking question, really, more than a traffic question.
Well, but it sort of goes to that. So how are people going to be coming into that, in and out of that space?
You're referring to?
No, it really is more of a parking question. So we can talk about that another time, in fairness. I'm just trying to understand who's going to use that space, being that it's on the far, it's a really big distance from downtown. So, okay, thank you, that's all.
I'm sorry, can I ask, I'm confused. We're talking about that gray space where you said that people, are you talking about the entrance and egress from Morris Avenue?
This entrance right here off of Morris, I think. Yeah, thank you. This entrance here, is this the municipal space?
No.
It's the entrance to the parking lot.
To the main parking lot. So if you're, where's the municipal entrance?
The retail is off of Cedar Street.
Okay, so I'm calling it the municipal lot that's under here, the retail lot, is that the retail entrance?
It's off of Cedar.
Sorry, I'm asking the wrong guy.
You're lost, but I can't be parked.
Which, which entrance is this? Through the residence, is residential parking?
That's the, yeah, that's residential park, yes.
Off of Cedar Street. Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I just checked, it's 110 units of, 110 spaces of parking for residents, 30 for retail.
Which can be shared at night.
Shared, yes, right. But that's the latest numbers. And then there will be some on-street parking as well, so. Okay, come on up.
Hi, Sue Roberts, 48 Oakland Place. So I have a parking leading into a traffic question, so bear with me until I get through it all. So right now, we all know there's not enough parking spots for the units in the building. And that's just assuming that everybody has one car and not two-car families. So if we think forward a little bit to Lisa's point, another phase of this is the parking garage that we're going to build. So I think it'd probably be safe to assume that some of those parking garage spots will be overflow from the additional 140 units. Does the council plan after Phase 1 is done to do another traffic study to see if we're close to these numbers before you go forward with any other plans to build more parking garages?
Yes, I think as far as the other phases go, there'll be another traffic analysis of that.
A full traffic analysis.
Whoever it is.
For Sub District 1.
Yeah.
Before we build another garage, we'd do it.
Correct.
Okay. Then, based on the financial plans that were presented at the last meeting, my understanding, and I don't have all the numbers in front of me, is that we're depending on a 95% occupancy rate in order to get back the monies that we've received. So I'm right in understanding that if not having a parking space is an issue for renting that space, then that whole financial model has to be readjusted.
It's 90, the 95% calculation is the calculation that they assumed for the stream of revenue for a pilot. But understand that these, that the developers are not going to be building this without enough parking. They, you know, they know the market. They know in this market, how many, you know, in a building like this, how many cars they need to accommodate. And that, you know, they do this all over the country, they do it all over this region. They, you know, it's, you know, they're not building something that's underparked because if they build something that's underparked, it doesn't get rented and then they lose money, too. So I think.
So is it a 95% occupancy rate or it's not? Do we know what they're assuming for the occupancy rate?
The pilot numbers that Dr. Powell used last time were based on 95% occupancy rate.
So you're telling me that the developer's 95% rate takes into account that there's going to be parking for all of those residents?
Takes into account what they think the adequate parking is and what the parking numbers that we've worked out and that we'll eventually get to will be. They, you know, they, they know what their market is, is my point.
And we, can I say, when we started this process, because we're not real estate experts up here, we started by talking five years ago to multiple, multiple developers and saying, before we even put out an RFQ, a request for proposal or qualifications, what, what do you think is marketable in this space? What would make sense? Because that's, we needed that information. And we got a lot of information from very high-level developers from throughout the region. Then we put together the request for qualifications based upon what these six, seven, eight developers thought were doable, what would be feasible in this area. Then we got multiple responses from very high-level developers. And after that, then we chose a developer through many, many conversations and negotiations and have come through this. They're going to spend $70 million to build this project, this one building. They're not going to do that if they think that they're not doing it where they can rent the apartments and make a reasonable return on their investment. And so that's what we're going with. And I think that's what we believe is accurate based upon their track record. Two companies that have a long, experienced, and successful track record in New Jersey and throughout the nation.
Right. And so even if they think they can rent it, we still have a space and traffic issue for parking, right? I mean, does anyone here think we don't have a parking issue as a result of the 140 more units?
That's why we were saying, the numbers, we're talking with Mrs. DeCibio, the numbers are changing. We're working, we recognize that we need to fully address the parking issue. They're not building apartments anymore with, in a suburban, urban area where people are needing two cars. The 125 Summit Avenue Beacon, it's one parking space per unit. We're estimating 1.4. That's what, my point is, we're not finished.
Okay, so then I would like to respectfully request that until we have that parking adjustment nailed down, I don't think we should be entering into any final agreement because we don't have all the pieces figured out yet.
We've stated that multiple times, that we're not going to be signing, approving a redevelopment agreement until the parking issue is decided.
Okay, and you expect that to be still before the April meeting?
If we don't have, it's not, we are not signing anything till the issues are decided. It's not going to be a surprise. When we're ready to sign the agreement, there's going to be another opportunity for people to have, to make comments, ask questions. It will, you know, this is not going to take you by surprise. As soon as we have the parking sorted out, we will be back to the public with a report on the parking, okay?
Okay, thank you.
And I think Ms. Little, Council Member Little had something she wanted to say.
I just wanted to pronounce that in one of the meetings, I asked directly if the developers have been given the number of spaces, if they thought that it was adequate for the number of units. And I was assured that they do. We went, they knew that this is our vision, they live in, they rent them, they rent them for a high rent. They know how many spaces they need in order to rent these apartments at market rate. And I was assured that they looked at the parking that is in the building and say feels more than adequate to cover the units, the rent at market rate and the retail space at market rate. So they're comfortable, they have no incentive to underpark this building. As you said, they have every incentive to make sure that there's adequate parking for both residents and the retail, and they are comfortable with it. And they have a tremendous amount of expertise in this area, and they have every incentive to make sure that the building is properly parked. So I think that can give all of us a little bit of assurance about the parking situation.
I also want to mention that on top of that, we have our own professionals who validated those numbers. So we're not just going on the say-so of the developers. So, you know, we have our own independent experts who've been validating this information as well.
Okay, and then I'd have one more request. Now that we've figured out that the 24 additional students, and I'm still foggy as to where that number comes from, I know it's a Rutgers study, but I don't.
No, it's not a Rutgers study. There is a, there's a report on the city's website. You can read the report.
Okay. So can we readjust this now that we're talking about 24 students? Because that sounds like that's new news.
So, again, the trip generation that we calculate is based on studying sites in operation and counting the cars that enter and exit those type of sites. So I assume that other operating developments have some portion of residents that have children that require them to be driven to school or walk to school. So again, our study, we don't, we don't pull out, okay, these are the people that are going to work, there's 12 people going to work, there's 16 people going to school, and basically add them all up. We, based on counts that are done at existing sites and their driveways, that's how we come up with how much traffic this site would generate. So again, just as much as, you know, other sites may have schoolchildren, this one, we've accounted for that analysis as well. I was just, again, I hadn't seen the schoolchildren's study, so it just seemed like it was a higher number unrelated to the traffic aspect.
Okay, and that analysis, you're comparing to towns that don't have busing, just like Summit, is that correct?
I'm comparing a whole, basically, a generic residential building that may have busing, may not have busing, may have, you know, great school district, may have an average school district. So it's basically a compilation, an average of all of those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bethard Road. So traffic has been my thing with all of the planning board meetings, so this is my topic here. So you have to give me a couple of minutes, I know the Elks are waiting. So I live in a half-mile radius of the high school and live right across from Oratory. And so I can attest to the fact that I appreciate what you guys do, so I'm not discounting your expertise here. However, there's been two failed engineers for the high school and the planning of that parking lot, so that expansion of that high school and failed planning there on that parking for the juniors and seniors. And I mentioned that before, prior council meetings, there was no parking taking into account for the expansion of that high school. So I just want to remind everybody that we have to plan for the future. And like Ms. Allen said, we have to take into account everything that's going on around us. And the 3,000 apartment units and all of the expansion that's going on around us is going to impact us here. So like Oratory, I was against the building across the street because I did not buy my house across the street from a school. And now that there is a school and the parking and the traffic engineer told us that there was going to be no impact on our street, but there is, there's two cars that are constantly parked outside my house, and it impacts us almost daily and nightly. So I think we have to look at the future and how this is going to impact our entire town. So I have these two things that I'm constantly dealing with on a daily basis. So I think we have to really look into the future. And I know we're not looking at the next sub-districts. And we're gonna, you know, like you said, we're going to reevaluate it after this one. But we really have to stop and think what's going to happen when everything starts overflowing onto Morris. And I know, like you said, we have to stop and slow down traffic. I can't even drive up Morris Avenue. So like another resident said, we go and reroute ourselves. So I don't drive up Morris, but I take Beechwood, I take Woodland, I go all around, all the other town, all the other streets throughout town. So I think we have to just take a step back and look how this is going to impact everything else and, and the retail. So great, we're not having grocery store.
Dory Gagnon, can I ask you to just get to your question? There are a lot of folks.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I have been waiting, so everyone else got to talk. So I just, my point is, the retail that's going in down below, we're not having a grocery store, but what if we have like a little bodega or a bakery or we have a bagel place that draws in morning traffic and a deli? Like today was a half-day, so there were mobs of kids in town at noon today. I mean mobs. My daughter works at Square Pizza, it's great, so she was there helping out at 12:30. I mean, that kind of traffic, that could be, which I would, I would love to have more downtown, more people coming. downtown, more people coming. But those kids coming from the middle school and that kind of traffic coming at that intersection scares me. I already had one son who was in a horrific bike accident here in town. And Beverly behind me was probably on the call, so she got to witness it. It is a horrific, it's horrific to see your own child get carried off in an ambulance, and I don't wish that on anybody else here. So I really want everybody to understand what it's like to just slow down and have people understand that the traffic needs to just come to an end here, and I don't want more of it. The other thing I, I want to understand is the impact on the YMCA on the Cedar Street being closed. So if that is closed, how is that going to impact the YMCA drop-offs? If you have anything that you can say on that?
Ms. Gagnon, it's not going to be closed. It's, Cedar Street is going to be open. It has the potential to be closed if the YMCA has an event where they want.
Oh, I thought it was just going to be closed, like, the whole street was going to be closed and just that little opening to go in and out?
Nope. They're not calling, well, they're calling it Cedar Plaza, but it's a shared street and it is not closed.
So, is it, is it like, not a street anymore? Is it like pavers?
It's still a street.
It's still a street?
It's still a street. There was discussions, again, if it would be flexible, so if there needs to be, or wants to be outdoor space from the YMCA, it would be accessible, kind of, I guess, what you have, you know, in downtown, you know, in the summer. But it's going to be an open street, it's a public street.
Okay, so you can go both ways still?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so still drop-off for the back of the YMCA to be able to use?
That was exactly what the redevelopers had spoken to the Y about, because they wanted that drop-off to be available.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Deborah Oliver, just a quick question that relates to parking, which relates to traffic, which relates to the overall design of the building. We keep being siloed off in these meetings, and I, thank you for your time, these were wonderful traffic reports. But I'm wondering when the residents of Summit are actually going to have a fulsome discussion about all of these things, because they're all one big ball of wax. They can't really be siloed off as, as you're trying to do. So when are we planning on having the next town hall meeting? Not emails that kind of disappear down a black hole, but a back-and-forth where there's truly a discussion, not a one-way street, about all of the concerns that have been raised about the Subdistrict 3 project in particular? Because we, a month has gone by and we're not being allowed to talk about all these different aspects. So that's my question.
The answer is that we are presenting things to you as we have them available to us, in the interest of bringing people in and giving people updates as we, as we receive them. We, you know, and if we waited till everything was tied up in a neat little ball to have a conversation, then everyone would be upset that we hadn't brought them in sooner. So this is, you know, part, it's an iterative process, as we've said, and I'm not going to argue with you about it.
No, no, it's not an argument, but iterative process, I know. In my former career, I practiced as an architecture for, as an architect, a professional architect for a decade. I have an undergraduate degree in architecture from Princeton, a master's degree in architecture and urban planning, also from Princeton. I know exactly how the iterative design process works. And it is something where criticism needs to be received from the clients, that's us, and delivered to the design team. And then they come back, they come back with changes to the design, all at once, so that then you can see the next presentation. And we're not being allowed, we're getting little snippets, like, I'm glad to read on your FAQ that some parking has been increased, where's the design? How has that impacted the building? And why are we still talking about 140 units when that is 25 units over the maximum density that's allowed by the redevelopment plan? So it's, it's, I'm wondering when we can actually have a two-way discussion, that's really what I'm asking.
Look, I think, I don't think it's fair to say that there haven't been two-way discussions. We have engaged the public since 2016 with the master plan, and then 2018, we started the redevelopment process. And a lot of what you're seeing today is what people, you know, in 2018, came to meetings, picked, you know, looked at images and said what they wanted to see. And we can't, you know, we went back and forth with the redevelopers, came back with different things. This is not, you know, there's, granted, there are some people who were not aware that this was going on, but this is in over four years of back and forth. So I don't think it's fair to say that that hasn't happened.
Well, I appreciate that, and I totally acknowledge that this is, that there's, the website is just papered with legal documents. I get that. I've read through all of them, and I bet a lot of people haven't. But really, you can't talk about a building until you have a drawing. And the first time we were given a drawing was at the town hall meeting that was a little over a month ago. We saw some perspectives and renderings in the Zoom virtual meeting in 2021. But really, the conversation can't start until we get away from words and we get into drawings. And that's where people are, and that's what people saw. And people had wonderful comments, and they're still trying to ask these questions, and they're still trying to see what the changes are. And I think that's where it's not getting pulled together. So I think we all are hoping that you'll have a couple more town meetings. Show us the new parking. Show us how that works. And, and let us talk about the size of the building, and why is it still 140 units?
The size of the building is something that, is it not something that we're going to continue to talk about as far as, we're not going to be redesigning this building. We have, we got to this point after four years of back and forth and, and input from the community. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's.
I don't have a preset, I don't have, I don't have any preset concept, but I did read your own, not you personally, but council's own carefully crafted redevelopment plan of 2019, and it sets forth standards for density. And this Subdistrict 3 building doesn't abide by those standards. So that's a mismatch that we all wonder about, because we love the redevelopment plans. It's, it's a vision for Summit, but, but we're not following it with this, this building.
Unless I'm mistaken, the redevelopment plan is a framework. And within that framework, there are opportunities for us and for the developer to get certain amenities that the city wants, for which then the redeveloper gets increase in density. And so, I, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but I believe that the 140 fits within the framework of the redevelopment plan. There was a certain number that was set forth, but we're not going, I don't think we're going beyond the plan. Given, given the opportunity for the amenity and rehancements. And I'm getting far afield from traffic, so I apologize for that.
I'm sorry, but I would disagree with you there, because actually.
Well, maybe, I could be wrong, I'm not, I'm not, you know.
With, if you add in.
I'm not an architect.
Okay, well, if you add in the 45 units per acre.
You know, we're way, we haven't even started the agenda yet, and the Elks are.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, can you, can you please have another town hall meeting where we could actually vet these ideas?
Yeah, we plan to have that. And we're not going to vote on anything without having a full presentation and another discussion.
Well, are you referring to another council meeting where we're restricted in what we can say, or are you talking about a town hall?
I don't know what the difference is.
There's a huge difference.
You're restricted in what you can say at a council meeting.
Yeah, you're telling us we can only talk about traffic.
No, but because we have traffic consultants sitting here answering questions.
That was the agenda, but if we have an overall open meeting regarding the project.
Project, we will have all of our professionals here to answer whatever questions are being fielded.
And I, we don't know yet whether it's going to be here, or whatever.
We'll figure out a location, but that's not really.
But it will occur.
The important thing is having all of our traffic, you know, all of our people. Tonight, we only have our traffic experts, so we're only talking.
I understand, and I apologize for that digression, but I think everybody would really like to have a fruitful, wholesome, two-way street discussion.
And we'll do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
On your line, 10 Milton Avenue. Monica, the lady that spoke about the senior housing across the street, my mother-in-law lives there, and I'm so glad that she spoke, because I've had the same problem, and one thing leads to another. So I don't know who did the traffic study, you said it was years ago, and people didn't, older people didn't have cars.
The parking study for the senior housing.
It was when the building was built, many years ago.
So somebody did a parking study?
I presume so, I don't know. Before my time, I don't know that there was a parking study. All I know is, the assumptions they made when the building was built, was that they didn't need X number of parking, because not many people were driving.
Well, here we are today in 2022, and there's something wrong. The high school, Dory spoke about it, there's not enough parking. My son is here, he's 18. He's no parking for the fourth quarter. He does cross-country. We live at the east side of Broad Street. It's 40 minutes walk to school. The high school got it wrong. Parking's not adequate. And here we are today. But he's going to be here, he's 18, he votes. We all, most of us have AARP membership here, he doesn't. So he'll be here to witness what this goes forward as, what we look back, when he looks back in 20 years' time, what this mess might be. That's my prediction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? So we have one, would you like to read the one written comment?
Council President, there was a, an email received yesterday from Dr. Jeff Hankinson. He asks the, to ask the presenter, Brian Stankis, regarding the Broad Street West traffic study, where the bike lanes will be. It is imperative that we provide lanes for the emerging battery-powered bicycles, scooters, and other devices, which will become more popular as a way to get to the train station. A bicycle corral is eventually be constructed, and a safe route should be designed in the traffic plan.
Well, at this point, I can say that the plans do not include any marked bicycle lanes. They were, I guess, we had, we had spoken of that, obviously, the bicycle circulation improvements are an important part of the redevelopment plan. I would say with regard to Subdistrict 3, you know, that Broad Street and Morris are both under the jurisdiction of the county. But really, I think the, I think the discussions that we ended up having with the, with the redevelopment team on the city's side was that the, I think it has to do with the, with the framework and the guidance, or the, I guess, the lack of specific guidance in the, in the redevelopment plan as to what bike line, what bike lanes need to be included. And I think also the other factor is the lack of a larger bicycle planning study. For example, a bike lane on Cedar Street isn't much use if it doesn't connect to, to a larger network. It's obviously something that needs to be looked at going forward, maybe with other, you know, as other sub-districts come on, as, as the opportunity to expand a bike network presents itself. But at this point, obviously, the, you know, the streets are very constrained as well, you know, it's not easy. But that's, that's the state of, of the bike circulation at this time. And I don't, Matt, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
I have nothing to add. It's obviously related to the city and their consultants.
Okay, thank you for the answer. And with that, I'm, we're going to end the presentation and move on to the next item. Mr. Stankis and Mr. Sackler, thank you so much for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
It was a little bit of an endurance contest, but I think you guys are off. All right, so now, if, we'll give everyone a minute if people want to leave, and then we're going to do the monument, because we have, we're going to move the War on Terror Monument. Okay, all right, we're going to take a quick seventh inning stretch, and then we're going to do the War on Terror Monument, okay? Okay, great. Okay, we're going to now get started. We're going to rearrange the agenda a little bit, because we have a number of people here for the War on Terror Monument, which is, if you look at the agenda, is Capitol Projects' number five. So if Councilmember O'Sullivan would like to get us started?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your patience. This is ID number 9504, to authorize the use of public property for the American Legion Post 322, the addition of a monument for the Global War on Terror and upgrading the War Memorial Section of the Village Green. The American Legion, Lindsay Street Post 322, and Summit Elks Lodge 1246 are partnering on a proposal to renew and rededicate the Monument Park on the Village Green. Their proposal is a request for permission to install an additional monument to honor and recognize the sacrifice of those who served and are serving in the Global War on Terror. These two organizations also want to upgrade and/or refurbish portions of the World War II monument, clean the World War I monument, install a replica of the Medal of Honor on the Medal of Honor monument, and install two granite benches to replace the three current wooden ones. The Daughters of the American Revolution monument within this area of the Village Green will remain undisturbed. There has been ongoing communication among the city, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the American Legion, and the Summit Elks to make sure everyone is comfortable with the proposal. The cost of all of this work will be funded through private donations, various foundation commitments, and in-kind donations from the city of Summit. As a condition for the work to commence, the American Legion should prepare a final plan for submission to our Department of Community Services for approval and scheduling. And I enthusiastically ask that we adopt this resolution.
And I second. So I'm going to ask at this time that Henry Bassman come up, the American Legion Commander, and are you, you're the person who's speaking tonight, correct? Mr. Bassman?
First of all, Council President, I'd like to thank you for changing the agenda in consideration to us.
You should have done it before the parking. That was my mistake. Next time, you'll go before parking, or traffic. Traffic. But thank you for coming out tonight, all of you.
This has always been a very veteran-friendly community, and the veterans in this community have always been very active in veterans' issue. You see here, a represented, representation of our veterans' community. We had, before, people had to leave to go to work early in the morning. We had about 19 people present, and I believe we had two letters that were sent to Ms. Lecaties. So you can see that this is something that's very important to us. Bill Rapp and I reported to this council in 2019 that the brick monument that you see in the center there, dedicated to World War II, Korea, and Vietnam service people who died in service, was in sad state and needed significant repair. And David Naidoo, who was then council president, heartily endorsed our doing something and asked for a proposal. It's taken a while, but we now have the proposal. We originally were considering plating the World War II monument, the brick monument, with granite. But when we got the proposal, it was a ton and a quarter of granite, and we're not so sure that that monument is designed to withstand that additional weight. So instead, we are going to replace it with a beautiful granite monument, and I'm going to skip forward to show you what we propose. How do we do this here? Somebody help me here. What's the advance? Oh, there it is. This is the, what we propose the park to look like after this project is complete. This is a conceptual drawing. It's to scale, but it's not precise in terms of inches as to where things will go. It's to give you a concept. Now, this shows three benches, because when Bill Rapp and I met with the Daughters of American Revolution representatives, they indicated that they liked the bench that was, that was there now. And so we added to the plan a third bench. Now we've subsequently found out, they don't want a third bench, and we're going to drop that. It's already dropped from the plan. So we're working very hard to cooperate with any interesting, interested parties to make sure that everybody is pleased with the outcome of this project. You can see that the DAR monument is not impeded in any way, nor is the traffic flow interrupted. So we're, we're very happy with that. That is basically the proposal. If any of you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone on council have any questions?
Thank you, very, yes, ma'am.
So, Council, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Bassman, not only for your service and for your attention to this matter. My question is, do you have something in mind to increase young people's traffic to the monument? That is one of the things that I was happy to share with you. When I was a kid and I used to do the poppies for the American. I was a kid, and I used to do the poppies for the American Legion and honoring veterans, and I was wondering, are you giving thought to how to make service more, more on the radar of our kids?
Well, it's, it's really, it's really fortunate that you asked that question, because one of the things that we were asking the city to consider was, after this is done, or in conjunction with this, to provide some suitable lighting for the evening hours, so that in the summer, if people wanted to get outside, they could sit on the benches, or they could gather nearby. Or if there was an event on the green, it would be lit, and people would be attracted to it and come and visit. I think, I think you're right. I think it's important that our children and that our grandchildren understand what it is to serve, and how much of a sacrifice people who serve make, whether they are wounded or mortally wounded or not. There is, there is a commitment, and we ought to recognize that. The reason that we built the Medal of Honor monument is because, over the years, the story about Sergeant Eggers and Corporal O'Neill had been forgotten, and we wanted to put something permanent up there so that they would never be forgotten.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, any other questions? Any questions from members of the public? Thank you so much, Mr. Bassman. We really appreciate it. And I guess, if there aren't any council members who have questions, or comments, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone wanna come up and speak?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Rapp.
Hi. My name is Bill Rapp. I live in Chatham now, but my heart will always be in Summit. I just wanna say, an important part of our Memorial Day service is when we do the laying of the wreaths. We now will have a, an occasion to lay an extra wreath in front of the global war on terror. And we also will be able to include the global war on terror with the Daughters of the American Revolution, and with representatives of Korea and Vietnam, and I don't think we have anybody from World War I. But we plan on including more veterans who are willing to, to present more wreaths in front of that beautiful, and I wish, I wish it was in color. I've seen the rendition in color, but that mural etched is absolutely, it's gorgeous, and it's breathtaking. What will be, what will really be nice about this is that, being in the green, it's close enough to so many of the schools, the high school and the middle school, that teachers can take field trips and bring their, their kids down there on Veterans Day, and in Memorial Day, and Flag Day, and be able to hopefully explain more about what the meaning of that is. And the American Legion is also, we have a quasi-speakers bureau that is always available to any of the schools to be able to come in and talk to the students and that, and hopefully, we'll be able to do that in conjunction with this. So I hope that the council will vote unanimously to allow us to do this. And we hopefully are targeting Memorial Day of this year. I know that's very ambitious, but we're ready to, we're ready to go, and get this done, and get this up, and this Memorial Day to dedicate it. And I thank you for listening to it.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I, Rick Wolf, 133 Summit Avenue. I also serve as the exhausted ruler of Summit Elks. And I thank all of you for your service to our beautiful city. And it's exhaustive work, and it doesn't, doesn't get appreciated, which it should be. But I'd like to thank our, I wanna answer Councilwoman Hairston's question a little bit. Our chairman of our Elks Lodge, Mike Helmers, here, past councilman here in Summit, and he has an idea, which I think we're gonna vote on at our meeting tomorrow, to fund and recognize graduates of Summit High School who have volunteered to enlist in the United States military in any of the branches. So we're gonna move that forward. We're excited. We look forward to approval of this project. This started as an idea, and I'll be short. I was in Lexington, Virginia. I went to Virginia Military Institute undergrad, and they had a little memorial park, kinda like our Pocket Park. And my wife was shopping somewhere, so I had some time to cool my heels. And I see this little plaque. They had a lot of plaques for World War II. It wasn't quite nice, is what this can be. But they had a little plaque recognizing all those who were serving in the global war of terror, a war that's been going on for 20 years, and will probably go on for another 20 years, sadly. And so, I brought the idea back to Henry. And thank God, Henry. He got excited. He got Bill Rapp excited. We got our lodge excited. Our lodge is behind this, and we're confident we're gonna, you know, it started out as one monument was $25,000, and then we said, well, what, we went out, looked at the World War II monuments falling apart. Well, it's another $25,000, and the benches are $3,000. And so, then we gotta clean up that beautiful World War I statue. So, that's, I'm confident we can raise the money, and we just look forward to you guys giving us the green light to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate all your hard work. Any other comments? Sitting here all this time, no one else wants to talk, huh? Okay, any other comments?
They wanna go home.
Yeah, of course. Any comments from anyone else up here? Thank you all. Thank you for your patience, sitting through all of this. Thank you for your support and for the work that you're, you know, gonna be doing. And we just, we need to take a vote, I think. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, thank you again. We look forward to working with you. And we appreciate all that you've done, and thank you for your service. Okay. Okay. public comment. So if there's anyone who has a comment on something that's not on the agenda, come on up. Did we have public, any public comment by email? No, okay. So no public comment. I'm gonna close the public comment period, and we're gonna move on to the regular agenda. We have, I believe, two ordinances for introduction. The first one is finance. So I'm gonna turn it over to Madam Clark to read the ordinance.
Ordinance under Finance, ID 9531, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. In the state of New Jersey, the levy cap law limits the amount of property tax increase, which is the revenue side of the budget, to 2% above the previous year. There is also a second cap, which limits the appropriation side of the budget to 3.5% of the previous year's appropriations. This ordinance allows for an increase of those appropriations up to the 3.5%, and allows any unused amounts to then be banked to offset future unexpected expenditures in either of the next two budget years. To be clear, the city will not exceed the cap, but this is an important step the city takes every year. It's helpful to think about this like an insurance policy. Coming in under the cap this year allows us to bank that cap for next year, just in case we need it, which, of course, we hope that we won't. There will be a hearing on this ordinance at our next council meeting on Tuesday, April 5th. But for now, I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second it. Okay, could we have a roll call vote? Madam Clark?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. So moving on to safety and health, would you please read the ordinance, Madam Clark?
ID number 9533, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Summit, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section 2-91, fees for rescue services provided by the fire department.
Okay, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance amends the code, Chapter 2, fees for rescue services provided by the fire department to add the definition of combined space standby team and establish fees for the same. This is being done because the fire department is performing more and more of these services, is a service where off-duty fire department employees do this service, to stand by to be needed when present for standby purposes when work is being performed in confined spaces. And so, it sets forth the fees that are needed, and defines all the terms. And we ask that this ordinance be introduced tonight, and for hearing on later day.
I second. Okay, could we please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, and that hearing will also be on April 5th. And moving on to resolutions, we've got finance, you've got finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So this is number 9530. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations in the municipal operating budget. Three reminders. First, the temporary operating budget can only be 26.5% of the budget from the prior year. Two, the temporary operating budget is in place until the final operating budget is passed. And three, again, this is not an emergency. This is only the statutory language required by the state government, so that this council can authorize funds to be transferred into their appropriate accounts and pay the bills in a timely fashion. The total amount of this appropriation is $1,039,110, and it brings the total temporary operating budget to $12,447,633. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, so are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. So the motion carries. Finance number two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9546. This resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the 2021 operating budget, from accounts with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. This is a common occurrence in the final three months and first three months of each budget year, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? You're just stretching, Madam Mayor?
Yep, yep, okay, just checking. All right. So I guess we need another roll call vote, Madam Clark? Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. So moving on to Finance number three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So this is number 9549, and this resolution authorizes the settlement of a tax appeal by KR Springfield Avenue LLC in the care of the Normandy Fund for the property located at 466 Springfield Avenue. The property owners submitted a tax appeal for the tax years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 21. The city, the city's tax assessor and tax appeal attorney came to this settlement agreement with the property owner. The reduction in assessed value will result in about $40,000 decrease in tax revenue for the four-year tax years in question in total, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to safety and health. Councilmember Little, would you like to take the first one, please?
Thank you. That's first. Safety and Health Resolution is number 9490, and it's a point of probationary firefighter. This is our closed session discussion. We are appointing Michael Carbonne as a probationary career firefighter. This is, he's being appointed to fill a position vacated by Fringsa Luga, who recently retired after a long career with the fire department. We are very happy to welcome Michael Carbonne to the Summit Fire Department. We have a long list of highly qualified candidates, and he is one of that group, and we are very happy to have him on board. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Oh, come on up.
Just to put, just to put...
Sure, absolutely, chief.
Just to put a record, it's Matthew Carbonne.
Oh, okay.
Matthew Carbonne, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, the name was incorrect on the agenda. Sorry about that.
I'll correct that for the record.
Okay, thank you. So, any other comments? No? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more, safety and health.
Thank you. The second safety and health resolution is number 9534, and that's a point of two volunteer firefighters. We are going to be appointing Taylor Bugorello and Matthew McComb as volunteer fighter fighters in the volunteer division of the fire department, and we also welcome them. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? We got those names right? Good. Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Community programs and parking services. We have one resolution. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9425, and this resolution authorizes the extension of the license agreement between the City of Summit and Atlantic Health System for the use of space in the community center as a temporary COVID-19 vaccination clinic. This extension is for an additional 90 days and will run through May 31st, 2022. Since February 2021, Summit's community center has been the home of Overlook Medical Center's temporary vaccine, vaccination clinic. This was an early collaboration that aimed to quickly protect the most vulnerable among us, reaching 25,000 vaccinations by early April 2021. The clinic has now helped distribute over 50,000 vaccinations in total. The vaccination clinic is open 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM every Saturday at the community center through the end of May, and walk-ins are welcome. I move to adopt this resolution. I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we're on to community projects and, oh, Capitol Projects and Community Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President.
Did you wanna bundle the first four?
Yeah, with your permission, if I could bundle the first four.
Yep.
These are ID numbers 9508, 9507, 9506, and 9505, to authorize the use of Maple Street for Finn Bar &amp; Kitchen, Harvest Restaurants, True Haven Enterprises Incorporated, and All My Friends LLC. At the February 15th council meeting, this body voted to authorize the closure of Maple Street to vehicular traffic to support our downtown business community. If approved, the resolution we're introducing tonight will authorize the use of Maple Street for outdoor dining for Finn, for Finn Raw Bar &amp; Kitchen, Fierino's, Root Steakhouse, and Summit House. To be clear, the sidewalk on Maple Street may not be used for outdoor dining during the temporary closure of the road. All of these establishments are subject to approval by NJ DOT and the City Clerk's Office. Fierino, Roots, and Summit House are further subject to approval by the New Jersey State Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Finn Raw Bar &amp; Kitchen is exempt from the extra approval because they don't have a liquor license. As the weather gets nicer, we can look forward to outdoor dining once all of the appropriate documentation is received by the city clerk. As we look back on the COVID pandemic, outdoor dining has been one of the bright spots for our community and saved some of our local businesses, and many people are looking forward to it again. And I ask that we adopt... to it again, and I ask that we adopt this resolution, these resolutions.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Good evening, Ms. Davis.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Davis. I live at 44 Ridgedale Avenue. I just wanted to say how much our family enjoys the outdoor dining on Maple Street. We celebrated a family birthday there last summer, and it was really a lovely evening. And there were other times where we, various groups of us, visited different restaurants on the street. The other thing I would note is that as much as we're all so happy that the pandemic seems to be waning, it's definitely not over, and there are those among us who have health vulnerabilities or who serve in jobs where they need to be concerned about the health vulnerabilities of other people, or have people that they're concerned about in their own lives. So, I think it's really great that the mayor and common council that you're doing this for another year, you know, another season, and I think it's going to be a great asset. And also, I think it attracts other people to our town because the setting in our downtown is so beautiful. I know I have friends myself who either come with me into town to eat or come on their own, once they see how lovely it is here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Are there any other comments from members of the public? And I think we had an email, correct?
Yes, Council President.
Yes.
This one is from Judith McCarthy of Shadyside Ave., and she says she's unable to attend this evening's council meeting, but she's writing in support of the resolutions for outdoor dining on Maple and for the Parklet Program, which is a resolution that's coming up. I think these things help make our city vibrant and contribute to a stronger feeling of community. That's it.
Okay, so, hearing no comments on the days, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we're now jumping down to Capital Projects, number six. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9527, to authorize the continuation of the Parklet Program for 2022. If approved, this resolution will authorize the continuation of our Parklet Program that Summit has had in place the last two years in accordance with city regulations. The dates that the Parklets can be in place are from April 15, 2022, through November 30, 2022, to expand outdoor dining opportunities. Individual requests for Parklets will be considered if insurance and permits, among other things, are satisfactorily presented to the city clerk's office. Each establishment that is approved for a Parklet will be responsible for the daily maintenance and provide their own tables and chairs. These dates mentioned in this resolution are subject to inclement weather or any health and safety reasons that may arise. I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. Councilman O'Sullivan, do we know, I know there was discussion around making the Parklets look a little different or nicer. Is there discussion of what the barricades will look like and how that'll, is it going to be uniform?
We didn't get that far this year. If we move forward with the Parklet Program next year, there's going to be more guidelines as far as uniformity, and there'll be a fee schedule, but this year, there's none of that. They're just going to go forward as the last two years.
Okay, and then sidewalk, power washing, trash, you know, that's my, is there any consideration of more power washing and just ensuring that that area, because it does collect trash, it's nobody's fault because?
Yeah, well, they're responsible for the daily maintenance, so, and the same for any kind of a snowfall or things like that, they have to, you know, still shovel their walks. So, we can be extra vigilant to make sure they're doing that, but I understand, it gets windy and trash blows around, not anybody's fault, not blaming anybody. It just happens.
So, any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Come on up, Ms. Gagnon.
Good evening. Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. Okay, so, I had spoken about this a couple council meetings ago, and thank you, Mr. Schreger, for getting back to me about my question about the parking spaces. So, I had asked a question about the Parklets and how many Parklets were used last year, and he responded that there were nine Parklets used, and a total of 15 parking spaces were taken up with those Parklets in town. And seven parking spaces were used for the Maple Street closure, so that's a total of 22 parking spaces in town that were taken up. And I did some research at the Bank Street, I think it's the Bank Street one where, my streets are off, I think that's Bank Street where Randalls used to be, right? That's Bank Street?
Yes.
I think there's like 25 parking spots or 27, you might have to.
On that street?
On Bank Street, that parking lot right there. I think there's like 25 or 27. So, those, that number of 22 spaces is almost like a full parking lot if we did those numbers of what we're losing in town by using all the Parklets. So, just with me having my disability last year and not being able to walk like I used to, and now seeing Ms. Lowshert, she just had surgery, and so she's going to be out for a long time, and I know you said you had surgery, we have to take into account for people who've had injuries and disabilities, that's a lot of parking spots. So, I was talking, you know, to people who are storefront owners, that if we take away those parking spots in front of owners who are adjacent to the Parklets, those are people who aren't coming in to use their storefronts. So, I just, my question to you is, how many of these Parklets are we giving out a year to the City of Summit so people can use?
Well, we don't have the number yet this year because they still have to send in applications.
So, it's just an unlimited amount?
It's not an unlimited amount, but we, you know, but as we receive them, the Capital Projects Committee works with, you know, with.
Right, there are a number of stipulations in the resolution, but as far as the parking goes, you know, the reason why we're doing it, and it's a balance, you know, we hear it from our Parking Services Director, Rita McNanny, you know, if we don't do it and we lose storefronts, we lose restaurants, then we'll have plenty of parking because nobody will want to come downtown because there's nothing to come downtown to. So, we have to kind of balance this out, and I think we've erred on the side of trying to help our local businesses become whole, and it's the same thing with our Maple Street closure. It's to help those guys get back to where they were in 2019. And I think through it all, we're ADA compliant, I know everybody has their own situation, but, you know, we still have handicap parking, we still have, it's still accessible. It may not be the number that, you know, you're looking for, but it is a balance, and I think that's what we're trying to do.
I think, you know, just to add to that, we are also balancing, because there's also a benefit, the outdoor dining is something that attracts people to Summit, and we just won an award, I think in part, you know, as a great, what was it, Summit?
The New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association named Summit as the best downtown in New Jersey.
I saw that, that's awesome.
And the outdoor dining, I think is.
I think that's fantastic, I really do.
It has an impact.
I do, and I walk to town, so I, you know, I live close, so I'm able to walk and do that stuff, but I just look for everybody else who's, you know, might be missing out on that and being able to go use those, you know, I just think of the broader public and when you're injured, how it affects you.
Well, and it's really easy to get a handicap sticker, because I've, since I've been mayor, as our city engineer knows, I've broken my foot twice. You can get handicap stickers, which are, I often really liked to have it even though I don't need it now.
You can't get away with it.
And then, just a couple other things. I was on a committee last year to help clean up Summit, so my daughter and I went around with some garbage bags to help clean up the garbage, because it was getting pretty bad with the Parklets. So, I agree with the fact that our downtown could use a little refresher, so like outside the storefronts, we have areas where people can be gardening in their own little areas. I would suggest maybe that if it's not the responsibility of the storefront owner, that maybe we have a committee here within Summit to step up and be a part of the gardening committee or do something like that, to beautify the City of Summit and have trash cleanup. There's lots of volunteers, the eighth graders need volunteers, high schoolers, I would suggest that because it's really lacking within this town to beautify. It's really sad to walk around and have the dogs go to the bathroom in those empty areas. It's really detracting from here, so that's my suggestion. If you want to have these Parklets, I would suggest make them nicer then. If I can't stop you from it, just beautify it. You know, you have these pretty lights now, it looks pretty, make the area around it a little bit nicer. I'd be more than happy to walk around with a garbage bag again and help pick up trash, just as long as, you know, there's some flowers. I was weeding, I mean, I was doing whatever. I'm here to make the town look nicer, I'm here to make people look nicer, just, you know, whatever we can do to beautify the area, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Gagnon.
Thank you.
Okay, so, are there any other comments on this topic? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we're now moving on to Capital Projects, number seven.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9511, to authorize the purchase of two sanitary sewer grinders. Bergen County Cooperative Pricing System for $61,170. These sanitary sewer grinders are part of the critical infrastructure at the city sanitary sewer pump stations. The useful life of these grinders is typically five to 10 years. As these grinders are nine years old, it is prudent that we replace them before their failure causes unnecessary damage to our sewage pumps. The grinders will be purchased through the Bergen County Co-op from Rapid Pump and Meter Company of Patterson, New Jersey for a cost of $61,170, and I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we're moving on to Capital Projects, number eight. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9539, to authorize the grant application submission, Union County 2022 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program and Execute Grant Agreement, Tulip Street Improvement Project. This Union County grant has brought back a total of $662,000 collectively for the last five years for various city projects. Our engineering division would like to submit the Tulip Street Improvement Project for consideration to Union County. Funds awarded through this grant must be matched dollar for dollar by the City of Summit, and the funding request cannot exceed 50% of the total project cost. It is important to note that all matching funds must be incurred and expended in the calendar year 2022. The improvements to Tulip Street are a 2021 capital project, and this is, that is shovel-ready for this summer. The project will rehabilitate the pavement, curbing, and drainage along Tulip Street, as well as installing traffic calming measures and pedestrian safety upgrades. I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Does anyone have any comments? Any members of the public have any comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Capital Projects, number nine.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9554, to authorize the grant application submission, New Jersey Clean Energy Program, Community Energy Planning Grant Program, and authorize execution of grant agreement. The Community Energy Plan and Grant Program will help cities like ours plan for energy, resilience, renewable energy, and efficiency to work towards a better environment for all residents. If awarded the grant, the funds will be spent over 18 months to draft the energy plan for the city and would lay out steps Summit can take to accomplish energy-related actions needed to meet the state's 2050 energy goals. This work will also contribute substantially to the city's next master plan. The total of the grant is $10,000 with no match required from the city. I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. I am excited to see that we have a grant going forward, that we're looking at our energy. I have a couple questions, and I apologize I didn't get to you sooner, earlier today, so I don't know if these questions are answerable here, but when we submit this grant, do we, are we locked into anything? Like, is it just an evaluation, or is there, at the end, do we have to, are there steps that we have to follow in order to meet the requirements of the grant?
Well, it's just related to creation of a plan and related strategies. This $10,000 grant that we're applying for would go towards salaries, overhead, consultants, any contractors, any other expenses. But as far as locking us into anything, I don't believe so, but I think we're all trying to, all municipalities are working towards the state's stated energy plan of 2050, so that's it. I don't know if Mr. Schreger has anything to add. I mean, we're not locked into anything, we have to do anything.
Yeah, okay, so, Erin, just give me one second, because I feel like there's a lot in the plan. It's a 200-page plan, and I recommend everybody goes and reads it at newjersey.gov NJBPU. They're actually having a stakeholder meeting on March 25th for people to weigh in on this, and I absolutely believe we need to go down this track, but in it are, you know, retrofitting buildings, current buildings, there's being carbon-free by 2050, but there are some near-term, like 2030, goals in seven years from now, developing certain energy storage, increased compliance in mandated buildings, and energy code stringent appliance standards. So, I just, I want to make sure that we are absolutely moving forward and doing the right things for the community, but even as we were discussing development tonight, you know, how is our development falling into this plan? And if we're going to start going down this path, I want to make sure that $10,000 doesn't say we have to do, you know, certain steps, because when I read the back in here, and I don't want to waste people's time, but there were certain things that had to be done, so I just want to make sure, that's all.
Okay.
So. Any other comments from members of council?
Just extremely quickly, Council President, there's a bunch of things, like EV charging for the city fleet, right, solar powered, whether we want to do something with a microgrid, whether we just want to put freestanding solar, whether we want to do the energy infrastructure grant process that you can go through to upgrade city buildings. These are all things that we want to do, I just think we have to write them down somewhere, right? And I think that's, I think that's basically what this grant allows us to do, because we're going to need to hire probably somebody who has some expertise in doing this, and then hopefully they say, here's the 17 things you need to do, and here's the list of priorities, and let's get started. So, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? You're good?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we've got one last resolution, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9517, to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, Buildings and Grounds Unit, Part-Time Custodian. Ending, or, as we discussed in the closed session, we are declaring a vacancy for a